Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is March 27, 2019, and we are holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank everyone for coming today. Our order of business will be honoring excellence, then the CEO report, followed by public participation. We'll go into executive session, and then we'll come back and start the voting process. As I do at every meeting, I want to remind everyone that courteous and civil behavior is much appreciated and always expected. Madam Secretary, please lead us in a pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The regular meeting of Wednesday, March 27, 2019, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you. Member Garza?
Present.
Vice President Guzman?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Goldsby?
Present.
And President Clark?
Here.
We have five members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson, General Counsel Joseph Mariarty, Latonya McDade, our Chief Education Officer, Elizabeth Kirby, our Chief of School Strategy and Planning, our Honorary Student Board Member Aisha Ahmed, and our Shadow Student this month, Leslie Sedkowski. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you just said, we have a new Shadow Student with us today. Asher, I think you're going to introduce Lisa. Please do.
Thank you, President Clark. Today, we are joined by Leslie Sedkowski, a senior at Jones College Preparatory High School. Leslie, would you like to say a few words?
I would like to thank President Clark and the members of the board for this opportunity. I am a Chicago Aces Mentor/Participant, where I presented at the Illinois Institute of Technology, a member of the Spanish Honor Society, and have won several city and state awards as a solo and orchestra violinist. I also worked as a videographer on a documentary film with Columbia College about the youth's response to gun violence, and was presented at a Columbia College showcase. I am honored to be a part of this board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here with us. You produced a film on gun violence. That's outstanding. And where was it shown?
At Columbia College, at a showcase.
Yeah, it was presented at a showcase at Columbia College.
That's really outstanding.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Let us proceed with honor and excellence. Latonya?
Good morning. We begin each Board of Education meeting by recognizing the talents and accomplishments of our students and school communities. This month, we are in the presence of several champions, beginning with Mr. Connor Cameron of Eric Solario High School. Mr. Cameron recently received the inaugural Coach of the Year Award from the National Association for Urban Debate Leagues. According to this respected organization, Mr. Cameron's hard work and dedication have made debate the ultimate status activity for more than 40 students per year at this southwest side high school. I congratulate Mr. Cameron on this prestigious award, and thank him for encouraging our students to find their voice and become leaders in their communities. Please join me in welcoming Solario High School Debate Coach of the Year Connor Cameron.
Thank you for recognizing me and my activity today. One of the things that we tell our kids is that decisions are made by people who can stand up and make a cogent argument. Debate teaches skills that we want all of our students to have, a better understanding of how the world works, and a process with which this body is intimately familiar, the ability to use evidence to advocate for policy change in the world. If we are to give any meaning to equity, it is imperative that we give these skills to as many children as possible. A couple of people that I want to thank: Principal Itar Aldi and Solario's administration has been incredibly supportive over the last seven years that I've coached debate at the school. The Chicago Debate League, which is now Chicago Debates, has also been incredibly supportive. And the unique partnership between the league and Chicago Public Schools makes this activity accessible to lots of kids. We have two dozen kids who will be competing at the city championship this weekend. The partnership between the Debate League and Chicago Public Schools makes activity accessible to thousands of kids as young as middle school across the city, which is pretty cool.
I think that I'd love to see debate frankly in literally every school. I think it serves such a wonderful purpose. It allows people to learn how to stand up and speak and express themselves based on data and information, something that's very, very necessary if you're going to be successful in life. I know that debates in many schools, it's not in all of our schools, and it doesn't succeed unless there's someone dedicated to making it work. So your unique commitment makes all the difference in the world, and congratulations on your accomplishments, and we look to continue pushing debate in more and more schools. Thank you so much. Board members, any other comments or questions?
If I may, President Clark. Well, congratulations to you. And in a former life, I know what being involved in debate is like, and has hosted many debates. And there are long hours that are put in, sometimes midnight to 1:00 in the morning, I remember, that some topics took place. So thank you for your dedication to doing this and to promoting it for the children. What is the topic? Is there a topic for this year? What is the topic?
This year's national high school topic is about restrictions on immigration, so very timely.
Very timely. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support of debate.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Next, we are thrilled to recognize Audubon's 7th grader Erin Chang, who recently won the 2019 Citywide Spelling Bee. After finishing in second place for two consecutive years, Erin snagged the top prize for correctly spelling the word Pembroke. He will now go on to represent Chicago at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC this May. Please join me in congratulating Erin Chang, our district's number-one speller.
Thank you. Okay, so good morning. I have something. So thank you for inviting me to be here today. So before I begin, I'd like to thank a few of the people who have helped me get this far, so my parents and family, and my teachers and assistant principal. And it is such an honor to compete for Chicago Public Schools and represent them in Washington, DC this year for the Spelling Bee. And academic competitions like the Spelling Bee allow students the wonderful opportunity to not only learn and explore academic topics, but also teach them valuable lessons of persistence, having a fun time while doing so. In the past two years, I placed second in the Citywide Spelling Bee. Even though it was enjoyable and I kept doing the B, it was kind of discouraging to come so close two years in a row, but it taught me that perseverance is very important. This lesson of persistence shows that in any competition, the winner isn't the only one receiving something good, but the other participants are taught to persist and to never give up, not only in these competitions, but in life as well. This is a truly amazing opportunity that you give to students all across Chicago every year. Thank you.
That's just outstanding. Board members, any comments, questions?
Yes, I have one.
My question is, do your friends make you spell check the papers?
Um, sometimes.
And my second question is, what's the toughest word that you had to spell but didn't know in those previous years, and do you hate that word now?
Um, I wouldn't say that I hated it, but maybe the toughest one was probably one this year. It was acculturation, and I was wondering if it had like two Cs or one C, and I went with two Cs.
Wonderful.
Spell check here.
If I can just comment and just say congratulations again to you, and for being a model for persistence, I really resonate with your comments that you made with persistence. And, you know, one of the things I found in my schooling and in my leading of schools is that students who had persistence were most successful. So congratulations on that and for bringing that up.
President Clark, if I may, Aisha would also like to comment.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say that you're just amazing, first of all. I can't even spell most of the, like, I can't even sometimes spell what, and then you, like, being out there and then representing CPS in Washington, DC is just amazing. Like, you're the future of CPS, and I'm really glad to see the next generation being so wonderful. That brings, like, hope to CPS that we can be at the nationwide, like, we can be at the top. And then, so I'm really grateful for you, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Erin. Moving to athletics, we want to recognize Maria and Fabiola Rivas, two sisters from Lakeview High School, who advanced to the state tournament in tennis in fall of 2018. Maria and Fabiola came to Chicago from Venezuela two years ago and have become leaders of the Lakeview tennis team. They finished among the top 10 singles players in the state of Illinois. And Maria, who will graduate this year, is set to continue playing tennis next fall at Roosevelt University. Please join me in congratulating Maria and Fabiola, along with their coaches, their coaches Nora Boganski and Erica Bazagio from Lakeview High School.
First of all, we want to thank the Board of Education for this honor. Thank you for having us. And I want to thank my parents for the support and my coaches that were always there for us. So, good morning. My name is Maria. She's Fabiola. And I just wanted to say that being in the team and being in high school, it's, and coming from a different place where it's totally different, it's amazing having, like, these friends and your partners to, like, help you throughout, not even just sports, but also, like, throughout school, and just having someone that you know and you're, like, always there for you and supporting you, it's really nice. And it's been great these last four years are, they've been really awesome. Thank you.
Do you ladies play singles and doubles?
Just singles.
Just singles? You play each other?
Sometimes.
I won't ask who's the strongest. I'm a big tennis fan. In fact, I'm watching the tennis taking place in Miami right now. Do you ladies watch tennis on TV?
Yeah.
Who's the, for the WTA, who's the tennis player you would like to emulate the most?
Probably Turina.
She's pretty good. Board members, any comments or questions?
I do. Go ahead. Sorry, I'm all excited about all these nice things. I just wanted to say that congratulations again to you, and, you know, in my experiences, I've always found that students who were in season in their sport really did well academically, even though you were so busy. Did you find that true for yourselves as well?
Yeah, it's almost like you're keeping, like, schedule, you know? And like, you know, like, during the times you have to work for tennis and then work for school, and you have to have that balance of both. You need both to, like, be successful.
Yeah, that's a wonderful outcome, I think, of being involved and, you know, and being so busy that your academics and your study habits actually work really well. Thank you.
I was going to make a similar comment, Gail, but you said it so much more eloquently than I would have, but I just want to, again, congratulate you both. And, you know, I think we often here celebrate scholars and athletes. Today, we're celebrating scholar athletes, so I just want to congratulate you all again.
Next, we are pleased to welcome the Lady Commandos from Marshall High School, who finished the 2019 basketball season as the Class 2A state champion. This was the second state championship in two years for Marshall, who came from behind in the final minutes to defeat Telopolis, I'm sure I messed that up, To Topolis, by a score of 47 to 44. The Lady Commandos are coached by Dorothy Gators, who has led Marshall to 10 state championships during her 44 seasons with the school. With a record of 1,133 wins and 206 losses, she is the basketball coach with the most wins, male or female, in IHSA history. Please join me in congratulating Coach Gators and the state championship basketball team from Marshall High School. Coach Gators?
Thank you for those wonderful words. We did have a tremendous season, but that wouldn't happen if we didn't properly prepare earlier. One of the board members mentioned the correlation between academics and sports. We have 10 young ladies here today, and of the 10, eight are be a better students. So we always have concerns when our season is over, is, you know, how do we keep these kids interested and involved? So on behalf of Marshall High School and these young ladies, and our very supportive principal, we'd like to thank the board for honoring us this morning.
Board members, any comments?
How many members of your team are seniors?
We have two.
Two. So do you think that you will be back against Telopolis or whatever it said next year?
To Topolis.
To Topolis.
We plan on it.
Dorothy, it's just great to see you again, and you helped me organize Peyton when we opened, and forever be grateful for that. And ladies, I've been to your gym, I've seen so many games at Marshall, and what a joy. And thanks for being involved, and keep up the academics.
Thank you.
Did you say that eight out of 10 were be your better students?
That's correct.
That's outstanding.
We have two young ladies who are on a 4.0.
That's really just outstanding. I'm glad you pointed that out. Your athletic skills are phenomenal, and when that's coupled with your academic skills, it says so much about who you are and frankly, where you're going in the world. I have to ask this question: Who hit that winning basket?
Gee, I can't even remember.
Oh, they know, though.
Ashanti Kaiser. That probably was her own basket, was the only basket she made, I believe.
Put your hand up, sweetie, so we can see who you are. Is that you? Now, I recognize basketball is a team sport, and hitting the winning basket doesn't mean anything unless you had a lot of scores in the interim, so you all did very, very well. But I'm just curious. Congratulations to all you ladies, and boy, your future's so very bright. Thank you so much.
Finally, we are thrilled to welcome the boys' basketball team from Ora High School, who recently nabbed the Class 2A state championship for the third consecutive year. This talented crew is just the fourth basketball team in IHSA history to win at least three consecutive state titles, and they are the first small high school to do so. The Spartans are coached by Lou Adams, who credits the leadership of his senior athletes for helping the team stay focused during this demanding season. Please join me in congratulating Coach Adams and his team on their historic three-peat.
First of all, I want to thank the board for honoring us for being here this morning. My name is Toronte Williams, and I'm a senior.
Very tall.
My name is Toronte Williams. I'm a senior at Ora Cavity High School. I just want to say, Ora's just not like school known for basketball. Like, we have very good academics. Our team work hard, on and off the court, especially in the classroom. Our coaching staff, and Dr. Andrews and his teaching staff also have a relationship with each one of us. They push us every day in every class to work hard. I want to pass the mic to my fellow teammate, Terry Williams III.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Terry Williams III, as he said. I just want to get started off with saying, I'm just so happy to be state champion with these individuals with me on the left and right of my side. And like Toronte said, we're not just a basketball school, we focus on all our academics, and it just, it helps us with everything. And my principal, Dr. Andrews, she provides us seniors, like, with a college class called Resmution, and all of our seniors are mostly passing, and it helps our credits go higher. And I have an A in that class. I want to bring Lou Adams to the podium, the best coach ever.
First, I want to get honored to God for allowing us to be in this predicament again. Without Him, none of this is possible. I just want to point out a couple of things that people always talk about Ora and basketball, but the most thing I got this year was that we're a level-two school, not only just the basketball team, the whole school, which is good. We're moving in the right direction academically. And this is the first year ever that I ever had a player that has a scholarship offer from Northwestern, which is big for us, Toronte Williams. No other school this year in the public league has that, no other school. So we proud of Toronte to get a scholarship offer from Northwestern, which is big for our school. Sharif Kenny has a scholarship from Missouri, and I think Greg turned from Connecticut, and Terry going to prep school, so that's good. And then we got a lot of guys that's on my team that I'm sending to my college, which is Russ College, HSBC in Mississippi, Mike Taylor, Samaje, Robert, they all going to HSBC in Mississippi, which is Russ College, which is good. So all our boys are going to school, which is the most important thing. And these boys have been good for us for three years, two years, however. I love them, and they did a fantastic job.
And good morning again. I just want to thank you for allowing us to be here today. And as the principal of Ora for the last three years, this has just been the most, it's just been a really great experience for me. I don't know if I could have, if I could love a school better than me loving Ora. Just know that my goal here is not only to make sure that all these boys have successful lives, it is my duty to make sure that every single student that crosses my path finds success, whether it be during college or whether it be going right into the workforce. So just know that my heart and soul is about making sure that students are equipped to be successful humans when they leave the school. And thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
Thank you so much. Board members, any comments?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate all of you, and especially on the academic achievement and also the achievements on the court. So my question, it's a very simple question: Any predictions for March Madness? Duke? Okay, well, we may see some of you sometime in the future there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Did I hear you right, that you became the principal three years ago?
That is correct.
And they began winning the state championship when you arrived, and they haven't stopped? I don't know what the, you got some kind of blessing or something going on, but what will be, what's, how do you top this for next year?
Well, of course, we want to have continued state championships under our belt, but, you know, I don't know how we're going to do, but we're going to have our girls next, and we're going to do volleyball and football. I guess that's our next. But most importantly, just making sure that all of the students have options when they leave, so.
Congratulations to you guys.
Thank you.
It's really amazing. Just a quick comment. Listening to young men speak and the principal and the coach, every successful school that I have focused on always has a dynamic principal. I think there's absolutely no exception to that, and you're obviously a living proof of that. These young men have an extraordinary coach, who not only guides them on the basketball when they're playing basketball, but I think he brings other insights to their lives based on what you just said. All you young men have above-average or even extraordinary athletic abilities, and that actually is a very useful thing to have, and it will carry you quite far. But at the end of the day, what I liked the most was all of you that spoke said something about your academic achievements, and you're proud of that. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't be shocked at all to look at TV one day and see one of you playing on a professional team, if one or two of you is possible. But you always want to take care of the academics first. And the athletic ability could get you scholarships, could open many, many doors for you. But at the end of the day, you want to focus, focus, focus on the academic side, every bit as much as your, as a God-giving athletic skills. And I heard that from all those folks that are talking to you every day. But really, congratulations, three times, three-time championship, that's outstanding. Congratulations.
And just to be 100% on today's successes, congratulations Spartan gentlemen, and how well you spoke, and coaches, and your leadership and principal. But the other thing I heard, in addition to your working hard at the study table, is that it's a team sport, and to be good team players, team players follow sometimes, and they lead sometimes. And I think that's one of the benefits of being involved in the extracurriculars that you do. So thank you and congratulations on being involved and the successes that it brought you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations again.
Okay, thanks.
I'm thrilled to report that earlier this year, Chicago Public Schools principals received their budgets for the 2019-2020 school year. This was the earliest school budget release in recent memory, and this was made possible because two years ago, our families and school communities joined Mayor Emanuel and our elected officials in Springfield to fight for fair funding, for our, the fair funding that our students deserve. Because we won that fight, CPS is on firmer financial ground, and we are able to provide principals with the time they need to thoughtfully plan for a successful new school year. Our improved financial outlook has allowed us to provide an additional $55 million to fund the largest one-time academic program expansion, increase per pupil funding by 2.5% to raise teacher salaries and support school programs. We're also able to provide additional resources for the students who need them the most. They include more than $6 million in new funding for bilingual education and $31 million in equity grant funding to help ensure a child's zip code does not determine the quality of education they receive. We are also investing $27 million to give up to 2,800 more four-year-olds access to free full-day pre-K programs next school year. Our investment in pre-K prioritizes high-need communities on Chicago's south and west sides, and is the next phase of Mayor Emanuel's ambitious plan to provide free full-day pre-K to all four-year-olds in Chicago by 2021. Finally, the school budgets we released this week include over $5 million to fund the largest one-time academic program expansion in CPS history. This means that beginning this fall, nearly 17,000 students across 32 schools will have new access to rigorous, high-quality programs like STEM, IB, dual-language, and fine and performing arts. These programs came through a new transparent application process that we highlighted in past board meetings that empowered our principals and school communities to advocate for the unique needs of their students. Seventy schools submitted proposals to request academic investments for the 2019-2020 school year, and they created these proposals using data from our district's first-ever annual regional analysis. We released this transparent, fact-based report in 2018 to give CPS families a clear understanding of the academic options in their communities. And I want to thank everyone who used... And I want to thank everyone who used that information to request a new program for their schools. The best part of the application process is that this will continue on an annual basis. So those schools who were not able to apply this year will have an opportunity to apply again next year. CPS has already released an updated ARA for 2019, which includes even more school-level and regional education data than last year. The new ARA will help more of our school communities assess their needs and create rigorous proposals for academic investments to be made in the 2020-2021 school year. You can find this data on cps.edu backslash school data, and CPS will begin accepting these proposals later in the year. For now, we are focused on the 32 schools that will be receiving new programmatic investments this fall. I have no doubt that they will use this opportunity to help CPS build on the reputation that we've achieved as a national leader in the field of urban education. I will now turn things over to our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson, who has some more exciting updates to share.
Thank you, Chief McDade. First, I'd like to start the CEO's report by making a special announcement. Today, I'm happy to report that we are welcoming our first Title One, I mean, Title IX officer to Chicago Public Schools, and her name is Ms. Kami Pratt. This morning, we made this announcement, um, through email and via our social media channels. She will lead CPS's Office of Student Protection in Title IX, which launched last year to protect our students from sexual harassment, violence, and abuse. Kami is a licensed attorney, mediator, and Title IX coordinator, and I might also add a CPS parent now, who has spent the last 10 years working to eliminate gender-based discrimination, sexual harassment, and sexual violence from all programs and activities at the University of Phoenix. I am thrilled to welcome Kami to our district. We have total confidence that she will bring the same level of commitment to CPS that she has in her past experiences. Kami is not here this morning, but we should all give her a warm welcome to Chicago and to CPS. As a CPS educator and mom, my top priority will always be keeping our students safe. This is why CPS created a comprehensive plan of action to protect all of our children. Last year, just to recap, we rechecked the backgrounds of all employees, vendors, and volunteers who have access to students in our building. We formed the district's first-ever Office of Student Protection in Title IX to advocate for students and to ensure that we are not only catching the perpetrators of abuse, uh, for our students, but providing necessary supports to students that are survivors of abuse. We're also doing a better job coordinating responses between the schools and other departments within CPS. We launched, uh, an aggressive awareness campaign to promote awareness around harassment and abuse and ensure that every single student in Chicago Public Schools is aware of his or her rights to report any acts of abuse to the OIG, if it's through an adult, or to the Office of Student Protections, if it's a student-on-student case. Finally, we have partnered with the Chicago Children's Advocacy Center to coordinate support for our students, um, that are victims of sexual violence, and they have also assisted us in retraining all of the, um, employees in CPS to not only identify, but to make sure they understand their responsibilities for reporting any suspicious abuse. We also updated our policy to protect, to better suppe-, better protect students, noting that grooming is a violation and that all employees are responsible for making those reports. This commitment to student safety will remain a core component of every single thing that we do, and it's a major part of the district's five-year vision that we just launched yesterday. While I am, while I am, while I would like to encourage all of you to read through our strategic plan, it is located on the school, uh, on the district's website at cps.edu backslash vision, and we encourage you to send us any feedback or questions or concerns that you have about what's listed in that five-year plan. At this time, I would like to share with the board and members here today, um, a quick recap of the vision that we launched yesterday at Bronzeville Classical School on the city's south, south side, and to share with you some of the highlights in our plan for the next five years. The vision that we have set forth builds on the things that we've been doing in Chicago Public Schools. We're very excited to share details about how we intend to double down on the positive momentum that we've already been receiving in Chicago Public Schools and to really accelerate that over the next five years. Before we talk about where we're headed, I would like to recap just a few key highlights that we're extremely proud of. First, if you look at the freshman on track and the graduation rate for Chicago Public Schools, it is clear to see that we have made remarkable progress in both areas and have set a goal for 90% of our kids to be on track as freshmen and 90% of them to graduate by We're also, um, happy to report that we are setting an even more aggressive goal for early college credentials. Right now, about 46% of our students receive, I mean, have a college credential upon graduation. We're closing in on our goal of 50% this school year, and we have set an even more ambitious goal for the next five years. I continue to highlight the fact that Chicago Public Schools' progress is not only recognized locally, but has been recognized nationally by universities throughout the country, most notably, uh, through the Stanford University acclaimed Professor Sean Riordan, who said on pretty much every measure you can think of, the schools have improved, not only for students overall, but for every single demographic subgroup. We're also encouraged by the study from the University of Illinois at, at Chicago, where Professor Paul Zawikowski noted that for every single subgroup in Chicag-, I mean, in the state, Chicago Public Schools students outperform near peers and counterparts throughout the state. As we look at the progress that our district has made, we continue to be focused on three core commitments: academic progress, financial stability, and integrity, and restoring public trust. But if you look at our new graphic, we are also ensuring that equity is at the core of every single thing that we do. While we're very proud of the progress that CPS has made, we cannot rest on our laurels. Because if you only look at the aggregate data, it masks an untroubling, I mean, a troubling truth, which is that students throughout the city are not achieving at the same level. To that end, we are ensuring that we set aggressive goals that are very specific and based on student performance and, uh, uh, past performance at every individual school, and ensuring that every school knows what their goals are in order to help the district meet its overarching goals. This plan was developed through a rigorous community-based process. We started in early fall by meeting with every single principal in Chicago Public Schools and noting what the key priorities will be for this school year, as well as the key priorities that we would like to outline in the five-year district. We also used several, uh, means of, uh, engagement to talk to parents. Some of those were traditional with one-to-one meetings with parents through round tables and town halls. We also leveraged technology. At the end of the day, we end up engaging over 10,000 stakeholders, um, as outlined here on this slide, to help us develop the plan that you see before you today. With that said, we've settled on the six core values that are highlighted here, and I won't walk through all of them, um, for the sake of time, but I would like to highlight a few. First, the notion that every single thing that we do must be student-centered. Students are at the center of every single decision that we make, both at the school level as well as the district level, and that has to be front and center in any plan that we put forth. Second, the call-out to create a more holistic approach to educating our students. As I've said before, we're extremely proud of the progress that the district has made, but we, uh, in reading and math, but we also want to ensure that we create schools where students have a comprehensive educational experience that not only includes the core courses, but extra core courses like art, world language, and other courses. Too many of our principals still are making, um, decisions between world language and arts in our schools, and we know that every school should have access to all of those courses. Finally, um, I want to highlight the community partnership aspect of this plan. If you look in our vision, we've made several call-outs to community-based organizations and nonprofits that have supported our work. We noted we, that we did not arrive here alone, and as we look ahead for the next five years, we're calling on community-based organizations and other institutions throughout the city to help support Chicago Public Schools to meet its ultimate goals. Those goals are outlined here on our next slide, and as I stated earlier, we've worked with the University of Chicago Education Lab. I'm extremely proud of this process. I've been in CPS for a long time, and this is the first time that we actually sat down with a university partner, analyzed data over time, and made predictions that are both realistic and attainable. I can tell you, as a principal, I've looked at plans and goals like this and in some cases turned off immediately, believing that they were not achievable for our students because they weren't specific enough to our students' needs. I'm excited to say that the goals that we have outlined here are research-based and based on past performance in our district, and our principals will be receiving individual goals for their school that look at performance over time and will help them set attainable and, uh, measurable goals for their school so that we can reach these goals in the next five years. On one end, um, if you could go back one slide, I do want to highlight two quick things. Um, at the early childhood level, for the past, uh, few years, we focused on access and increasing the number of seats, and we are happy, uh, about the announcement we made, uh, last week about more classes for four-year-olds. But we are also doubling down and ensuring that early childhood is not simply about access, but it's also about preparation. The goal is to make sure that our students are entering school ready to learn in kindergarten, and that means that they must be readers or beginning readers at that time. So we're going to put resources into bolstering our early childhood program so that we have more of our kids entering ready to learn in kindergarten. On the other end of that spectrum, and I stated this earlier, we've set a much more ambitious goal around, uh, high school graduation. Our goal is a 90-90 goal, believing that if we can sustain 90% or more of our students on track to graduation at the end of ninth grade, that we can achieve this goal of 90% of our kids graduating and going off to post-secondary, um, endeavors after they leave CPS. On this page, it really just outlines some of the, the major areas of focus for, um, this school year. We want to continue, um, to advocate for equitable funding for CPS and also make sure that we are distributing the fu-, the funding that we're provided in a much more equitable and transparent way. We're going to build on some of the tools that we've already created, for example, the residence guide, to student-based budgeting, and also use other tools to make it more transparent how our schools are funded. We also want to ensure that our schools are, schools and the district is operating, um, in alignment with, uh, operational principles of excellence, believing that if we're better stewards of the funding that we have, we will be able to achieve our goals of putting more of the funding that we receive in the classroom. At the top of this, I talked about the importance of safety, and I really would like to just reiterate how important this is and how it shows up in a number of different ways in our vision. Um, again, we've created an office, a cabinet-level position to ensure that in every single office, we're looking at, um, our roles and responsibility for protecting our children here in the schools. We understand that parents entrust us with their most valuable and most precious thing on this earth, which is their children, and we want to ensure that they are safe when they're in our custody. In addition to some of the things that I pointed out earlier, I have committed to ensuring that the culture of the district is changing so that kids are protected here. We're also going to be make, working to make sure that every single school, um, passes a Safe School Certification by, um, fall of 2019. You will be hearing more information about that in upcoming board meetings, but essentially, we want to make sure that our students are protected, um, not only from some of the things that I've highlighted earlier, but ensuring that every single thing is in place to protect our children from random acts of violence or other disasters that can happen in our schools, and ensure that all of our principals and employees have been trained properly to address those issues. We will continue to try to recruit the best educators to work in our schools. I get the pleasure of talking about the great progress that we're making in CPS, but that progress happens in classrooms and in school buildings throughout the city, and without great teachers and strong leaders, we will not be able to accomplish the goals that we have outlined in this vision. We will continue our push to focus on principals, uh, on principal autonomy and development, believing that that has led us to success today. But we will also double down on our efforts to make sure that we are attracting the best teachers to Chicago Public Schools. We want to make CPS a destination and a place where people are proud to be employed, and we're also going to continue to work hard to grow our own teaching staff and workforce, um, so that we can fill all of the gaps that we have in staffing. Two examples of that include supporting some of our, um, ESP staff in obtaining teaching certifications, those of whom already have bachelor's degrees, and I'm also excited about the expansion of teacher certification, I'm sorry, not teacher certification, teacher preparation programs, um, as a career and technical education track, and we're going to launch two of those programs in a predominantly African-American high school and a predominantly Latino high school. Talked about the expansion of universal pre-K, so we can probably skip through that one. Lastly, I want to talk about a policy that we're extremely proud of, which is Learn, Plan, Succeed. In a year from now, our first class will be graduating, um, who will be responsible for having a post-secondary plan upon graduation. Our goal is to make sure that our students graduate and that they are able to reach their dreams, um, at post-high school. That dream can be attending a four-year college. Our goal is to make sure the students are all prepared to attend a four-year college, but some of them may choose to enlist in the military, enroll in an apprenticeship program or job training program, take a gap year, or go directly into the world of work. Either way, we want to make sure that they are aware of all of the options that are out there for them, and ultimately, it will be a student and family decision to, you know, at that point. We want to make sure that, um, these conversations are not just reserved for middle-class families and others. Every single student who leaves CPS should have not only, um, an SAT score in their back pocket, early college credentials, but also a plan so that they can obviously learn, plan, and succeed. This is our goal for Chicago Public School, uh, Public Schools. We want to en-, ensure that there's equity for all. We had an opportunity to roll this out yesterday, and I heard loud and clear from the parents and educators that were in the room, that equity has to be at the core, and that in five years, if we're able to create a world-class school system for a world-class city, that we will have the same opportunities across this great city. We know that that is not currently the case, but that is the work that is ahead of us, and we enthusiastically say, "Challenge accepted." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
President Clark, that concludes the CEO's report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, board members? Uh, I'll just make an observation, Dr. Jackson. Uh, one, I know the five-year rollout was extraordinary. I've gotten quite a bit of feedback. Uh, two, um, I want to reinforce, uh, this extraordinary part of Dr. Jackson's message. It's not enough that our students perform well at CPS. That's expected, that's, that's our job. It's also important that they are prepared for the next phase in their life, whether that's a four-year college, uh, whether that's a trade, uh, they're just, uh, whether they just want to go and work. They need to be prepared to be successful in their life, and, and Dr. Jackson's focus on this is extraordinarily important, uh, and will make, I think, a tremendous difference in, in hundreds of thousands of young people being successful in their lives. So I wanted to just to reinforce her comments along that line. We think about them when they're here, and we are preparing them for their future, obviously, with the help of their parents, so. If there are no more questions, I have one brief announcement to make, uh, and that's to encourage everyone, as I do at every board meeting, uh, to use, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the website, which is cpsboe.org. Um, and it's not that you don't, you do, but, uh, it's a reminder that may not be completely necessary, uh, but there, there's so much that happens in between board meetings. I just want to always make sure people know there's another vehicle to get to us, to talk to us, the board itself, uh, and, and that's going on the website. You can schedule, uh, time with individual board meetings, et cetera. So keep using it, uh, we make ourselves available to you. Madam Secretary, please, uh, share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 10:30 a.m. on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, and will close on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. or, or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. And if anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
And, uh, you thought I was going to forget, didn't you? I can tell you're looking at me. Um, we, we're in the process of, of selecting our 2019-20 honorary student. Asher's going to share the application process. Please do so.
Um, thank you, President Clark. So the, uh, application period for 2019 to 2020 honorary student board member is now open. I encourage rising juniors and seniors, current, um, 10th graders and 11th graders to apply. The deadline for the application is April 26th. More information is posted on the website at cpsboe.org. Please use it.
Thank you very much. Very well done. Okay, we're going to proceed now with our public participation. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Speaker-
Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our Board Office staff member, Eric. You will be lined up in the right order, and when it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience, and I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And before we begin with the speakers list, Mr. President, I will be calling up elected officials, and I will start with calling Alderman Cardenas from the 12th Ward, please, followed by Alderman Arena from the 45th Ward.
Good morning. Good morning. As I address the Board, President Clark, Heisman CEO Jackson. And of course, I want to acknowledge Arnie Rivera, who has been instrumental in being accessible like no one else has done before in addressing critical issues in our schools, and we are working on a couple of things that are good for a couple of our local schools. But I'm here today on a different topic. And by the way, before I start, I want to congratulate the Board and Dr. Jackson for having the calmest board meeting that I've been to in probably a decade. So something must be going on here. All good. Let's keep up the good work, Dr. Jackson. There's a lot to do, I know, not my perfect, but you have a budget to work with, excited parents and teachers that are working with you, and a tough agenda, but lots of going on. So thank you. But I'm here today on a very important topic and serious. The parents here besides me are from Calmecca Academy in my west Barton Park side of the 12th Ward. And a little background on the school, Calmecca was built in 2010. It was part of our efforts, Modern Schools for Chicago under the Daley administration, and is one of many schools that I fought hard to get, including Baccalaureate High School and a middle school as well. Calmecca, the name comes from the Aztecs. It's a house of lineage. It was an academic center for them in the most advanced civilization of their time. It's where they sent the noblemen, sent their sons and daughters to school with great expectations, to be the best in religion, to be the best in scholar, to be the best citizen above all. But close to home, we have a serious situation with leadership and our principal. And let me walk through a couple of, and all these points are being summarized by me because I'm the one that's speaking, since they will not be able to speak on their own. We have met with your leadership team, some of the LSC representatives that oversee LSC governance, and they're aware of our concerns of Calmecca's leadership, in particular, the principal, Polat. What is her last name?
Nancy.
Nancy Polat is her last name, I'm sorry. And some of the gravity of the situation is that the parents feel she has created a toxic environment. There's not a day that doesn't go by with something going on. Police has been called, media has been at the school, and I've never seen a school that, a level-one school with such a chaotic environment. Now, I see it when there's fighting going on, or there's philosophical differences in the schools, when there's budget issues and there's cuts, but not when you're a level-one school, not when your kids are learning, not when your fine arts are some of the best in the district, not when your former principal left you with such culture of excellence that this is going on. I don't particularly get involved in school politics. I have enough with my own, but it behooves me not to get involved, only because parents come to the office crying, how come their kids are let out in freezing weather without coats because of some action took place, and they see the principal fully coated with her head on, and a lot of the folks that are in the administration in the same way, with kids already inside the school with a drill that did not get completely exercised as it should have been. So some of the kids inside the school, a lot of the kids outside in freezing weather potentially could have gotten sick, and I don't know if many did or not. One of the many instances that this is going on, parents fighting each other, cops being called for petty differences that are going on, and some of the grievances goes on just very basic things. And you ask yourself, how is it possible she was renewed a four-year contract? How is it possible that a principal with such great academic achievements could be in such predicament? And it just, it comes from probably, I would say, and the parents could nod if they agree, with personalities, with pettiness that goes on with leadership skills that are lacking somehow. She came from a different school, and she allegedly was moved on for similar grievances, and somehow that didn't get caught in the next round of hiring, for whatever reason. And mistakes happen, mistakes are made, but we need to correct this, and we need your help. We need your oversight and your leadership and your knowledge of how things work to make sure that this gets addressed from your level on to the next, to make sure that the LSC is doing proper oversight, that documentation is provided in terms of meetings and how the school is being led, that a environment of calm and excellence is brought back to Calmecca. It's his mission from the beginning, it was. Let me give you a couple of instances. She has minimal attendance in evening weekend when events are required of her. She does not attend dual-language principal meetings that are necessary for the school. During teacher-parent conferences, principal is not fully engaged in the meetings. During emergency situations, as I mentioned, a power outage, principal leaves the building. She is engaged in aggravating students who are transgender, questioning their sexual orientation, and there's documentation of that. There is evident display of feminism with teachers, condescending, you know, disrespectful comments to immigrant parents. She is obviously a PhD. Dr. Polat needs some serious coaching and some serious help in her leadership, and only you can provide that. You have the resources, you have the manpower, and not only that, but you have the legal structure to guide her that if this is not a place for her, that she can move on to better and bigger things for herself. But this school needs your help. This school's of excellence. It came from 2010 of Level III or II when it started, merging different schools, different kids from various parts of the ward, and they were able to mesh into one unit of excellence. And that needs to continue. And I think all of that is going to come crashing if we don't do something about it, and this is why I'm here. Did I miss anything?
Thank you, Alderman.
Did I say everything that needed to be said? Well, one of the things that parents are particularly perturbed by it is what they call is the grooming of children, which she calls children to her office unsupervised and has conversations, adult conversations with the children, basically coaching them on, you know, why is your teacher doing this? Why is your parent attacking me? And the kid doesn't know what to do. Obviously, they think it's the principal, they respect her, she's a mentor to them. And to put them in a divisive manner with their parents is unacceptable. She should not be in one-on-one meetings with students unsupervised. It's just not acceptable. Sorry? So, of course, without help, I probably forget some things. I do have, for the record, introducing letters from the parents, her competency evaluation as well as of late. I'm sure there'll be more forthcoming, and there's signatures from teachers as well that have been there since the beginning. So this is not isolated. I would not be here, I can tell you, if it did not merit for me to be here. I do not engage in such actions without a great possibility of being correct in what's being transpired. I've been in Alderman for 16 years, and not once have I come before you with such circumstances, and I would never do so if it did not require action. So I leave you with that. I know the parents here, we've met before, I'm going to continue meeting with them, providing comfort to them and assurances that everything, not only is it going to revert to calm and excellence for their kids, but all of the kids that are attending that school. That school now accepts kids from outside the boundaries sometimes, as the principal has that jurisdiction, and that's great. The school is fully staffed, it's growing, has tremendous image, which is going to, I think, be affected if we do something about this, as the media is going to be being called. So please, everything I've seen here today is about excellence. The athletics, the academics, best of the best. This school is nothing but best of the best, as its mission was supposed to be. So I thank you for listening on this item, and I have a second item after this. Parents, are we good? Thank you.
And Chief Dade, I know that you're aware of the situation.
Yes, we are aware. Right now, to date, we have an administrator in charge at the school, Norma Cortez, and I do want to kind of turn this over to our General Counsel, Joe Moriarty, because we are aware of some of the allegations and concerns. So Joe, do you want to address this?
Yeah, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
These allegations have been referred to the Law Department, and the Law Department is working with the Network Office as well as the local school council and senior leadership here to determine what the appropriate course of action is. But I want to assure you that we are taking it very seriously, and we hope to provide, you know, a better situation for the school community at Calmecca soon.
Thank you. I can say that there's always a win-win situation for somebody of her stature. Obviously, she's a PhD, she earned it, but sometimes it just doesn't work out. In this case, I believe that that's the case, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next Alderman, Mr. President.
Let me just, before, the second item was, very quickly, I'm not going to take this long, it's regarding Kelly High School. I'm in full support of their efforts to become a college prep. I think the one, and I mean, you and I talked about this, they've done tremendous work in getting themselves there. Dr. Jackson, you were there, in the AP advancement classes they are providing to their students and the community, and it's fair. It's competitive out there right now, but it's a tremendous school, and I will work with Arnie on getting the roof fixed and all the other things that need to be done. But let's get Kelly, not just in soccer, but academics, they deserve it, the best possible outcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. Our next speaker, Alderman Arena, please.
Sorry, we have some materials for you about what we're going to be speaking today. I'm Alderman John Arena, thank you for hearing me today. I'm standing with representatives from the community around Shurs and Jefferson Park. I have two issues I wanted to speak with you today, so I appreciate your indulgence. I'm going to start with the issue around the San Cornelius Early Education Center. I want to give you a little bit of background, and there's some information in the folders that I've provided. In 2016, I voted for a budget that reinstated the CPS capital levy. It was agreed that the local stakeholders would have input on how CPS allocated these monies. My office worked hand-in-glove with CPS and local stakeholders to develop a plan to utilize $36 million to address chronic overcrowding across the 45th Ward Elementary Schools. It was decided at the time that Pressing School, being the most overcrowded at 175% utilized, would be allocated $27 million for renovation of the Dever era main building, an eight-classroom addition, a multipurpose turf field, and new playground equipment, in effect, creating an entirely new campus in the West Jefferson Park neighborhood. Because we wanted to distribute the money and make sure that we had impact on children in all schools, $1.2 million was allocated for a multipurpose field, turf field for Hitch School that is completed and heavily utilized right now. It replaced a poorly allocated grass field. $175,000 was invested in building schools, theater seats, floor, and sound system. That project is also completed. The remaining $7 million was to go to the cornerstone of the plan to renovate and reopen the former St. Cornelius School, which is a closed Catholic school that closed in 2016, and was going to be opened as a 10-classroom early education center with support classrooms, four support classrooms. My office opened up a conversation with Reach Out &amp; Read, Lori's Children's Hospital, and other partners to help augment CPS wraparound services that parent and student surveys have indicated an intense demand. These plans were announced by the mayor to the community in 2017 before a full auditorium of parents and reported on in the January 17, 2017 DNA info article, which is again in your packets, and a subsequent July 27, 2017 Nading Press article. The original plan was for the center to open in fall of 2018. Why is this important? Because every school in the Northwest Side has capacity issues. By creating an option for schools to shift pre-K to the St. Cornelius Center opens up valuable classrooms for K-8 grades, students, as needed, and we know that it is needed. Your demographics has told us this. Then came a call from the mayor, this is back in 2017, asking that if I would help him address funding priorities for capital investments in other wards, in neighborhoods where the schools are in much worse shape than the ones in the 45th Ward. We would do this by delaying one year the allocation of funds to renovate St. Cornelius. Being a team player, I agreed. So why am I here today? Because as I stand here, I have not seen the funding commitment expressly articulated in any CPS capital announcement. CPS just announced a plan to address the expansion to full-day pre-K across the system. Why am I here in 2019 having to ask when will this board be allocating the promised funding for St. Cornelius when the City Council passed a budget that committed the money in 2016? Fall of 2019 is when the community was promised St. Cornelius Early Education Center will open. Please don't let them down. Please do not make me regret offering to help those parents and students that I do not directly represent. Please do not make me regret my decision to collaborate and be flexible. Please do not make me regret offering empathy to communities in need. I ask that this board take this up and get the lease signed, get St. Cornelius built into the master lease agreement, which has still not happened, and show me that there is an allocation of funds to renovate this building and get it ready for students in the fall of 2019. The second thing I wanted to address with you, and you see a number of parents here representing Shurs, is to talk about Shurs and talk about the progress that's made and where we need some of your help. Eight years ago, I didn't think I could fill this room with enough students that would list Taft or Shurs as their first choice. Today, Taft is the first-choice school. When I talk to parents and they talk about how excited they are that Shurs is their neighborhood school. More importantly, I talk to the students that attend Shurs right now, and they are nothing but proud to call themselves Bulldogs. They are the voice of a school that is their first-choice school. Standing with me today are, among others, Lee Stein, who is the Chair of the Shurs Local School Council, John Carneth, who is the Shurs Alumni Board Member, Derek De Sierra, Board Member of Old Irving Park Association and Friends of Shurs, Barb Cohen, Board Member of- Board Member of Old Irving Park and Friends of Scher's, and Ricardo Solano, Senior High School, Scher's High School Senior and Student Council Representative. They will be, in turn, addressing some issues that Scher's faces right now. I'm going to top-line those, and they will back it up with some more information.
Alderman, just to be clear, you'll be the only individual addressing the board?
In this, right now?
Right now, yes, sir.
They are on the speaker's list.
And they're on the speakers' list, yes, sir.
They're on the speakers' list, and they will come in.
That is correct.
Scher's Field, this has been a four-year odyssey to get a sports field on a campus that has not been able to provide space to have a home game for decades. We are right now, at three, four months, this field was supposed to be completed in October. We are still waiting to see substantive, you know, progress being made on this field. So we ask that the board make sure that there is oversight here, that key construction gets this work done. We have allocated $3 million from the local TIF to fund this, and the community is worried that they're not going to see this completed so that we can hold the first-ever graduation ceremony for Scher's seniors this year, let alone actually have a home game on that field. Capital improvements are needed in this building. This is, Carl Scher's is a historic landmark, a national designated landmark. There are roof repairs, tuck pointing repairs needed, interior due to water damage, you see some of the photos, mold issues on carpeting, interior walls that are crumbling, building systems that need to be upgraded to heat and cool classrooms. The school desperately needs three engineers. They've been pulling back to two engineers, but to run a building of this age with the systems that in place, it is nearly impossible for them to keep up with the needs of the school. The community is very invested in making Scher's a successful high school for these students who currently attend and for these students whom will comprise future graduating classes. As I said when I first started talking about Scher's, this is eight years later since I first got in, and when I talk to parents at the door, they don't talk about, "I'm not sending my kid there." They say, "How do we make this school ready for my children?" And that is what we're seeing. The graduating classes from our neighborhood schools need a neighborhood high school like Scher's to be ready for them. The things that I've listed and the things you'll hear about are the things we need to do as a city, that this board needs to help us see achieved in order to deliver on that promise for these students and these parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Yes, sir. Arnie is going to address, I think, your capital issue.
So let me talk about the three issues. You know, one, St. Cornelius, you know, as the Alderman mentioned, this has been a project, you know, long in the making. You know, since I took this role, I've been in contact with Alderman Arena. We do have the 5 million dollars committed for the renovation of the project, so if there's anything additional you need from us relative to that funding commitment, we've done that, we will do that. There's some items that we're negotiating with the Arts Diocese unrelated to the ride or associated with St. Cornelius, that is part of the hang-up, but during our meeting scheduled for next month, we hope to resolve those issues so that we can get going and construction started this summer. On the Scher's Field, you know, as the Alderman mentioned, there have been a lot of fits and starts, a number of factors, including when the project was started in the fall, we had a very unseasably wet fall, as well as the conditions over the last few months that have delayed a number of projects, including Taft and Whitney Young, and folks have come to the board meeting, have addressed that. And he also mentioned the contractor, which we're working with tirelessly to get this stuff done. We will get the project done this spring. I have one of my top PMOs on that, I'm getting weekly updates on it. We got to get that done. Lastly, you know, I have been in contact with the network chief, as well as the school administration, as is my practice regarding some of those capital issues, and we will get those resolved. You know, I live in this community, I have a clear understanding of the importance of this school and a lot of the inconveniences that have been due to some of these issues, and we're going to get them resolved.
Thank you very much, Arnie. Thank you, Alderman.
Can I ask a question, just to follow up? On the allocation of the 5 million dollars, I'm looking for some statement or a line item in a budget that shows me that that's there, because we've said we're going to do it, but that was a commitment I have not seen.
We will send you an official documentation later today, Alderman.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we also have Alderman Sawyer in the audience with us, from the sixth ward.
Good morning, President and Board Members, CEO. For the record, my name is Roderick Sawyer, and I serve as the Alderman of the sixth ward. And I really came to really thank you all as a group. This is something that was important to me in my second term. One of the things I knew that we were lacking was an adequate high school to serve the Inglewood community. And as we approached the topic and we fought for the school, I want to thank everyone that was involved, particularly Dr. Janice Jackson, for your tireless advocacy and your assistance, not just in bringing in a school where over 90% of the children were going to school outside of the community. We were losing a lot of our talent in the Inglewood community. Now we have the opportunity to bring it back with a state-of-the-art high school, complete with athletic facilities and everything that we need, a health center, everything that we're supposed to have in a high school that serves a community. Another thing that I am really appreciative of is having a top-notch principal to lead the helm with Conrad, and I know he's going to do a great job. I was in a school meeting, a parent meeting, just the other day, and I was extolling his virtues to the community and let them know, once you meet him, you're going to see that you're going to have a great man there leading the charge for the soon-to-be-named school. But we knew, though, the team is the Panthers, so we're really proud of that. And again, I just wanted to come say thank you for your tireless efforts in helping us secure this, where everything is on schedule and prepared to be ready for fall of 2019. And again, we appreciate it.
Well, that was very gracious of you, Alderman. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can keep talking. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And, Mr. President, our next speaker then will be Michael Brunson, please, CTU Recording
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Before I start, let me just mention, I know you've been inside, so you haven't seen everything going on outside. Oh, my goodness, where are my notes at? There was a meeting today outside, a press conference, with the, just outside the CPS, with the parents, and they were calling for wraparound socio-emotional student and family supports, sanctuary from ICE, fully funded, high-quality bilingual education, sustainable community schools, and investment in neighborhood schools. I thought you might want to know that, since community partnerships is part of your five-year vision. They were talking about that today. I really wanted to talk about CTE. That's something that's been really close to my heart ever since I've been in office. I'm completing my third term, I've been in office for nine years. And ever since I've been in, I've been looking at what's been going on with what I prefer to call vocational education. My concern has been that there have been a lot of these programs that have been closed without any process. And when myself and the committee that I have, we call it a PAVE Committee, Practical Arts and Vocational Education, and we also have a joint committee, CTE, where we meet with CPS. We'd ask, what was the process for closing these programs? And we'd get something like this, you know, everybody pointing at everyone else, the principal would say it was coming from Central Office, Central Office would say it was coming from the principal, and then that's all we would hear, and then someone would whisper in my ear that it's actually coming from the network chief. We didn't know. So one of the things that we were able to do was embed something in our contract, in the 2015 contract, that does have a process for these, closing these programs or upgrading these programs, this Article 18-18 in this contract. And I guess since it's new, it tends to be overlooked sometimes. And we have to remind the committee persons that we meet with that we want to honor this new article. So what I'm hearing is that at Prosser High School, there was word, some, a word was leaked, it wasn't told, it was leaked, that they were going to get rid of the auto-body shop. And the staff was concerned. Not just the staff, but students were concerned and community members were concerned. Because I can tell you this, being an advocate of vocational education, I go out and I'll speak, you know, I'll speak in schools and I'll speak to parents about it, and all, every parent I've spoken to, they're really excited about vocational education, they want it. You call it CTE, I still call it vocational education. You call it STEM, STEM is part of CTE. But anyway, word leaked out that they were getting ready, getting rid of this auto-body shop. And people don't want that. As a matter of fact, you have an instructor in that auto-body shop who I spoke with, and he said, he got where he was because that's what he took when he was in school, and he was able to make a lot of money off of it, and he wanted to share those skills and those experiences with other students. And he's a really dynamic teacher, because he's also, I've also noticed that they have been posting videos online about, you know, really promoting auto-body and how important it is and everything. But anyway, once I found out about it, you know, we spoke, and I wanted to make sure that the local school council knew that they were involved in it. Because now, with this new article that we have, it says, "School administrators shall consult with the local school council prior to closing a CTE program. CTE programs shall not be closed or removed from schools without prior approval of the Chief Officer of College and Career Success or his designee, and the Chief Officer of College and Career Success or designee shall advise and consult with the union prior to approving the closure of a CTE program." That is Article 18-18.3 in our contract, in this contract right here. That was not done. I reminded someone at the school that, you know, I told them about this article, they had a local school council meeting, and this issue was brought up at the local school council, and it came up for a vote, and the local school council voted saying that they did not want that shop class removed. They wanted to continue with the class. They also had a PPC meeting, the staff met with the principal, talked to the principal about it, the principal denied that it was going to be taken out. Every time someone from the staff tried to get information on this, they were given the runaround. They were saying that, oh, it might be put here, or no, it's not going to be shut down. Well, you know, once again, I don't know, there's a lot of leaks out here. Someone leaked some information saying that there was an actual request to shut down this shop. It has not gone through the process. Now, we've gone through step one, where the local school council became aware of it, and they voted it down. I guess, and I had a meeting with the Joint Career and Technical Education Committee with representatives from CPS just last week, and they were made aware of it. And the director of Office of College and Career said she was going to attend the next local school council meeting at Prosser, which I think is great, but at some point, I suppose they're going to be talking to either myself or the president of Chicago Teachers Union with a determination. But I'm saying all this to say that we need to follow this process here. And keeping this information away from our members, away from the local school council, and away from community members, and away from students, first of all, it can't be done, because something always gets leaked when someone tries to do something behind someone's back. So, you know, we need to stop doing that. But also, they don't want that class, they don't want that program removed. And I think that in the spirit of what you call, you know, community partnerships and all of that, you should be listening to the voices of the local school council, and the students, and the staff in the school. They want the program. Now, they want their program so bad that they've also started a petition online to get signatures. People are getting riled up about this, and that's why I need to let you know. People are getting riled up about it already, because it has become definite that there has been a request to shut down this shop. They put a petition online yesterday. They want 5,000 signatures. They have almost 1,000 already, and that's just from being on there overnight. People want this class. So I'm, I just wanted to bring it up and appeal to you to make sure your people follow the contract, and I just wanted to make you aware of the importance of this class. It's an auto-body class. It's something that the students want, it's a skill that they can take out and use wherever. And I noticed that you were talking about your improvements that you have, it seems like CPS is swimming in money now. But you have enough to buy a, I think it's a paint shop or something like that, that this class needs. It's called a spray booth. You'll need a spray booth, and you'll need somewhere to mix the paints, and all of that's going to come to under $100,000, I'm sure. You know, there's already $12 million that's been invested in the school for a build-out. I don't see why, and that 12 million is supposed to be going toward CTE there, I don't see why you have to bring in certain programs and pull out other programs that other people want. So I want you to keep all that into consideration. You will be hearing more about this, because there are a number of people that are very riled up about it, and I think the best thing to do is just keep that program in there. And any other program that you think should be in jeopardy, please, let's talk about it before these decisions are made, so that we're not, you know, stirring a beehive here.
Thank you, Michael. I wouldn't describe our financial position as swimming in money. We are much improved, through a lot of hard work, but swimming in money is probably a bit of an extreme.
Well, you're not crying broke this time, so...
Yeah, we're no longer dying of thirst.
There you go.
Chief McDay, do you have any response to...
So this, that we, I don't know of any decision that has been made. Are you saying that the school received something, or you're just saying that this is something that you heard?
I started out by hearing it. And like I said, and I was hearing it because it had been leaked. But it was definite, it was made definite yesterday, because I received an email from one of your attorneys, Miguel Peretta, because he sits on the CPS side of our joint CTE committee, and I had brought it up at the last meeting. And he sent me an email yesterday saying that there was a request to shut down the auto-body program. So it's definite, it's no longer hearsay.
So I will, I'll look into it and find out, you know, where the request came from, the possibility that the request could have come from the school, I'm not certain, I don't want to say, but I will find out where the request came from, what conversations have happened, and look into this. We are committed to making sure that the programs that are in schools are meeting the needs of the students and the community and families. And so, as a district, we wouldn't just make a decision to close the program without that kind of engagement. So I will absolutely follow up on...
And you will consider the input of the local school council, the staff and the community and all of that.
Yes.
Because another thing that I'm hearing is that this push is not actually coming from the principal, he's caught up in the middle. I'm hearing that the push is coming from the network chief. And I've heard that before, that network chiefs shut these programs.
Well, like I said, give me an opportunity to talk with all stakeholders and find out exactly where the request is coming from, what the needs of the school and school community are, and we'll address it accordingly.
Okay, thank you so much. And we'll continue to talk about this.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. And our next speaker, Mr. President, Chris Bayron, please.
Good morning. I am the Chair of the Charter Division of the Chicago Teachers Union. We refer to ourselves as CTUX, Alliance of Charter Teachers and Staff. So I look forward to coming here in the future and being very thankful for stuff, but unfortunately, it's not the case today. There is a problem endemic in the charter industry. When you allow a private company to run a public school, well, they've got a bottom line. Their bottom line is a bottom line. Their business interests are paramount in the way they run their operation. We're educators. We're educators, student interests are paramount in how we operate. And as a union, we're the democratic voice for our educators. So there has been, we, we unfortunately had to, to strike at a Cero, to win special education protection, smaller class sizes, equal pay for equal work. And since then, there has been a wave of militant action in defense of charter educators and charter students by charter educators. So there's a strike in Chicago in December at Cero, there was a strike in LA at a charter school in January, there was another strike here in February at CICS, there's been a Wildcat strike for 10 days in Oakland of non-union charter teachers and there was recently a strike in Cleveland of charter educators for a first contract. On Monday, we announced five schools with four employers that were holding strike authorization votes. And it's, it's essentially, you know, we're doing the accountability that I think this board should do. Let me just, I'll just quickly, people have been waiting a long time, listening to a lot of presentations, I'll try to be very quick. Chicago High School for the Arts, the educators there are paid 54% less, if you include pension, than they'd be making in a CPS contract. 54% less. They don't, the employer refuses to pay into the Chicago Teacher Pension Fund because they're a contract school, so it's a bit of a gray area. But clearly, the CTPF has already came out and issued a statement saying that they should be paying into the CTPF. This, it would be great if this board did the same, followed suit. There's also, we got a bill introduced downstate, HB 2272, would close some of these loopholes so that they'd have to have open board meetings, they're not required to have open board meetings. Speaking of open board meetings, at Instituto del Progreso Latino, where two schools have non-strike authorization votes, Instituto Justice Leadership Academy and Instituto Health Sciences Career Academy. We went to their board meeting on Monday where they're very clear that they're subject to the Open Meetings Act and when parents, students and teachers showed up, well, they didn't, they wouldn't allow us upstairs and they apparently canceled their board meeting. This is, this is not good accountability practice. The, at the, at the table there, the employer is trying to make the case that we're subject to the Janus decision, that we should be in the, under the Illinois Educational Labor Relations Act. Which is ironic because the very lawyer that's arguing that argued the Chicago Math and Science Academy case, if people are familiar with that, it's the case that put charters in under the private sector law, right? Because card check is easier to form unions. So it's a union busting effort, then now that the public sector is subject, is right to work, now the very same lawyer is arguing the other thing, it's union busting pure and simple. If this board does not approve of union busting, we appreciate a statement and our support. Youth Connections Leadership Academy, I, I mentioned at the last board meeting I was here, the two students were shot at dismissal, one was killed, we're fighting for wraparound services there. This board is aware that charter schools are getting 8% more funding than district schools this year, the money is there, the employer is pushing back against this and a myriad of other things. And the last school I mentioned is my school, Latina Youth High School, where the, the charter management organization runs various different social services, so they brought in social services that bill for certain kinds of insurance, but not others. So students there, there are like 60 students, that's 30% of our students, who really have high need to see a counselor, social worker, therapist during the day, but they don't have access to it because the CMO cannot bill insurance for those people. So like, there's, there's an inequality of access to services that our students really desperately need. It's an alternative school, just like YCLA, just like one of the Instituto schools. So I would invite this board to do some more oversight and when you see us in the streets, you know, or on the picket lines, know that we're doing your job for you, so please support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bayron. Mr. President, I'll now proceed with the speakers list and we'll begin by calling Speaker Number One, Jenny Biggs, followed by Speaker Number Ten, Conrad Timbers Oswar, Speaker Thirty Two, Nicole Spicer, Thirty Nine, Chad Adams, and Forty One, Cindy Golladay, followed by Speaker Number Two, Dwayne Truss. Ms. Biggs?
Good morning, Jenny Biggs, CPS parent, raise your hand. Here's our list. Number one, we now have a parent's guide to dealing with bullying on our website. The toolkit's first section helps families navigate the CPS anti-bullying policy. Number two, during Emanuel's tenure, we've tracked $500 million removed from schools. The $32 million investment messaging is not lost on parents who have been hustling to fill budget holes imposed by the egregious school level cuts this unelected Board of Ed has approved year after year. Number three, shame on CPS for voting yes on the Lincoln Yards TIF diverting $477 million from CPS over 23 years. Number four, you're also selling out students to tech developers, why are you hiding the CZI contract behind your nonprofit children's first fund? This is especially concerning when many of your new program investments tout personal learning without transparency about what that entails or evidence of efficacy. Number five, this morning, we gathered with CPS parents from across the city calling on the next mayor to implement community-centered equity. CPS cannot have equitable outcomes without an equitable process, which means the students and families experience the grading, experiencing the greatest disparities in our district must have meaningful decision-making power in defining the future of their schools. Number six, let us not forget the harm done to students due to the denials and delays of special education services. We call on CPS to address this more aggressively and get the students and families the compensatory services they are owed. Number seven, we at Raise Your Hand work to get more money for our schools and we also push for the insufficient funds that do exist to be spent well. This flashly, flashy booklet about a five-year vision feels like a slap in the face to parents whose schools routinely run out of copy paper and other supplies by the, this time this year. I have three kids in three different schools that don't have paper right now.
Ms. Biggs, thank you for your comments.
Both mayoral candidates promised to end student-based budgeting, we hope the equity fund is only necessary to, for this year's budgets. Since Emanuel's appointed BOE has failed to heed parents' desperate pleas to end the failed SBB experiment, this is the last school board meeting before Chicago elects a new mayor, we hope the candidates are listening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, everyone. My purpose here today is simple, we must retain Dr. Jackson and the team that she has built regardless of who our next mayor may be. Why? Progress, equity and transparency. In 1987, then Education Secretary William J. Bennett said, "It would take a man or a woman of steel to clean up Chicago's school system." Chicago was said to have the nation's worst education system and I quote Mr. Bennett, "I'm not sure there's a system as bad as the Chicago system." We are currently in a place I don't think William Bennett or anyone would have thought. When we talk about progress, CPS ninth graders projected to earn a bachelor's degree within six years of high school graduation has more than doubled over the last decade. 76% of CPS students graduated from high school in 2018, up from 57% in 2006. The percent of on-track freshmen at Chicago Public Schools rose from 65% in 2008 to 89% in 2018. In terms of equity, Dr. Jackson has committed to equity and access for our most vulnerable students and neighborhoods. You could look no further than the new state-of-the-art STEM high school being built in Inglewood, one of the many initiatives that Dr. Jackson and her team have dedicated themselves to accomplish for our students. Transparency, from meetings with Dr. Jackson as a member of the second cohort of principal fellows to the regional analysis meetings, Dr. Jackson is clear, concise and all about making Chicago Public Schools the nation's best public school system in the United States. If we go back to 1987, a time when the late hero Washington was elected to a second term, the Bears had just won the Super Bowl the year prior and Chicago was the worst place for public education, according to William Bennett. What Bennett didn't know was in that so-called worst system in the United States was that woman of steel. She was only 10 years old at the time. This woman of steel was being reared to ensure that every child in this city, when she became of age, would have access to high-quality education. She is our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson, a proud product of CPS at every level.
Mistress, sir.
We know that we are headed with Dr. Jackson and the team she has built. Equity surrounds all that she does and if we continue to stay the current course, our schools will flourish at a level never before seen in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please, Nicole Spicer.
Good morning. I am Nicole Spicer, proud principal of Bronzeville Classical School. I'm here to publicly thank Dr. Jackson and the constituents of Bronzeville for the creation of our school. My support comes at the most appropriate time, Women's History Month. Dr. Jackson is truly a trailblazer. According to the American Association of Schools Administrators, 2006 State of the Superintendency Study, 21.7% of school superintendents identify as female and about 6% of all superintendents identify as a person of color. Despite the lack of diversity within her field, she continues to be a champion for success and excellence and an advocate, an avid advocate for access and equity. I stand before you as a result of her advocacy. Bronzeville Classical School is the result of a community led by Pastor Chris Harris Senior and the full support of older woman, Pat Dow, advocating for upwards of six years to bring a selective enrollment school to the Bronzeville community. My connection to the Bronzeville community dates back before my time. My grandmother's family migrated to Bronzeville from Georgia and she met my grandfather there. I attended school in Bronzeville, earned my first job at ARMOR certified on 41st and Indiana and spent countless hours and days in Bronzeville making some of my fondest memories with my family on 41st and, 41st and Wabash. It was my destiny to return, return back to Bronzeville to lead a school. It is my firm belief that thriving schools support thriving communities. The Bronzeville Classical School community intentionally values and highlights the strengths of all members through personalized learning, celebrating diversity and practicing creative problem-solving in order to cultivate strong accelerated academic program to empower lifelong learners. In closing, I would like to sincerely thank Dr. Jackson for her vision, talent and abilities to bring it to fruition and willingness to accept the challenge to level the playing field for all of Chicago's children through strategic focus on access and equity across our city. With gratitude and respect, Nicole Spicer.
Thank you, Ms. Spicer. Our next speaker, please, Speaker Forty One, Sidney Golladay.
Good morning, Sidney Golladay. So I would like to thank the board, our president, the members and our CPS leadership. Today, I'm speaking in support of Dr. Janice K. Jackson, an inspirational leader, the epitome of transformational servant leadership. So our homegrown leader is courageous and transparent and I just want to highlight a few steps that she's taken for our district. So protecting Chicago's children has been an age-old issue that she took on head-on. So thank you for addressing that and making the steps so that our children are safer. Our area regional analysis meetings, so thank you for providing those for our families, they were in attendance and were very appreciative of your transparency. Town hall meetings, thank you for hosting those in our neighborhoods and hearing from our parents, students and from our communities. Network tours, so thank you for visiting our networks and letting us know that we are important, so your on-the-run tour was well-received. Principal Advisory Councils, Student Advisory Councils, hearing our voices and letting us know that we are welcomed in your presence, we appreciate that, it means so much. School visits, individualized supports to meet the holistic needs of students, so schools have received social workers, counselors, much-needed supports for SEL. Equity funding, thank you so much for hearing and understanding that our students need equitable funding, not equal funding, but equity. Early budget releases, two years in a row, we appreciate that. So being a fourth-year principal, that means so much and it looks so different and it, it feels different in our schools, so thank you for that. Sustainable Community Schools funding recipients, so Drake was a recipient of that fund, we appreciate it because we are able to offer services from 7:30 AM to 7:30 PM each day. Thank you for investing in our most valuable asset and resource, our children. So I commend you, a history maker and a living legacy, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golladay. And the next speaker, please, Chad Adams. As Mr. Adams approaches the podium, I'm going to call the other principals I believe that are in the audience with us, Speaker Number Sixteen, Dan Kramer, Speaker Number Twenty Eight, Claudia Lopez, Speaker Number Forty Five, Teresa Peoples, and Speaker Number Fifty One, Nika Gunn. Mr. Adams?
Good morning, board, thank you for having me here. I was worried that my entourage was going to leave me, I'm glad they're staying here. It's nice to be surrounded by principals. I'm the principal of Chad Adams of Sullivan High School in Rogers Park, where we believe in family integrity, service and tenacity, best. I know I might not look like a principal, but I'm okay with that. My wife says I'm, I'm looking good these days. And I, I come in support of, as a, as a special education child, first and foremost, that's who I am. I grew up in Mississippi, grew up poor, I grew up struggling in school, failed the fifth grade. And I know I might not look like my kid, but I feel like my kids every day. And I know that this leadership team, I'm looking at these women here and these people over here have kids in their heart and that's what matters the most. I've been in this district now as a nationally board-certified teacher, as an instructional coach at Finger High School, as a assistant principal at Harper High School and now as a principal at Sullivan High School. And I'm just pleading to the board, as the new mayor takes office, we need consistent leadership, we need a clear leadership plan like Dr. Jackson and her team have provided. We need clear communication like they've had and we need a clear leader with kids in their heart. And I know that they have that and first and foremost, and I just stand here as a person, a parent of a CPS child that has the same damn IEP I have, that we need this. We need this consistency, I've been in this district for 18 years and we need this more than anything. That's the way that we're going to go from good to great. And I want to also call out Carl Kemp over here, I hope that he can retain his position as CEO of Sports Administration and keep going because he's a great man, too. I also, I also want to call out Arnie Rivera for listening to our capital needs and our facility needs and always being a, a voice of kids first and foremost in a community. So thank you. And lastly, I'll leave you with a quote since we are all about basketball today. I looked up some Dr. J quotes, Dr. J, Dr. J, from the Sixers. And he, and he, and his, one of his favorite quotes of mine is something I hold myself to and I know these ladies and the leadership team hold themselves to and it's as simple as, "I demand, I demand more for myself than anyone else could ever expect. I demand more for myself than anyone else could ever expect." Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, and the next speaker, please, Dan Kramer.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Kramer, the principal at Roosevelt High School. I'm very proud to announce that we are one of the 32 schools that recently received the award from the Progress, Program Focus RFP and we will be adding a dual-language program, joining just two other high schools in the city that offer dual-language. It's very exciting to us, first and foremost, I'm here to say thank you. We are really thrilled about this, the entire school is buzzing about the opportunity and it's going to have school-wide implications for us. It's not just promoting multilingual fluency or students pursuing the seal of biliteracy, but we're really taking this as a challenge to embrace school-wide, to look at our curriculum, to make sure that it represents the students that we have in front of us, to make sure that it represents diversity, equity, that it promotes a, a love and respect for our highly culturally diverse school, our neighborhood, our city. In particular, I am here to thank Dr. Jackson and her team, so Chief McDade, Chief Kirby, the entire team for providing this opportunity. This team has come in and challenged us as school leaders to really know our communities, to know our parents, to know our students and to craft a unique school vision as to how your school meets those students' needs. They have challenged us, but they have supported us along the way. And I'm going to quote, sort of misquote, I'll say paraphrase, one of my favorite educators, Dr. Richard Elmore, to say that this team knows the work because they have done the work. We are supported as school leaders by former school leaders and I can tell you, having been in the district for 20 years, that is a remarkable difference. We are excited to see the five-year plan, I can tell you that I speak for Benny when I say we hope that is just the beginning. I'd like to see the 10-year plan, the 20-year plan, as many years as we can keep this team. And again, I'd like to say thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And our next speaker, please, Twenty Eight, Claudia Lopez.
Good morning, members of the board, President Clark, Dr. Jackson, my name is Claudia Lopez and I am the principal at Fairfield Academy, an elementary school located in Chicago Lawn on the southwest side of the city. My, my student population is comprised of 70% Hispanic, 25% African-American, 98% My student population is comprised of seventy percent Hispanic, twenty-five percent African-American, My school was recently awarded the Middle Years IB Programmatic Designation. On behalf of our school community, I came to personally thank the board. Dr. Jackson, four-year noble vision of creating equities across the city. With the IB Programmatic Designation and the investment that CPS has committed to make, will bring only a few of the following benefits. Preparation of our students so that they can access world-class high schools and universities. Early exposure to IB curricular programming. Currently, my students receive this exposure once they've been accepted to an IB program at the high school level. Development of critical thinking skills and capacities that will serve as a foundation to empower and inspire children and to position them on an even higher plane to positively impact their own life trajectories and the lives of those who surround them. On behalf of the Fairfield community, I am here to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And our next principal is speaker number forty-five, please, Teresa Peoples.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Tariq Peoples, and I am the proud principal of Emmett Till Math and Science Academy, which will now receive the Fine and Performing Arts Designation. I would just like to take a moment to thank Dr. Jackson for making it possible for Emmett Till to receive the Fine and Performing Arts Magnet Programming and for giving CPS students across thirty-two schools access to thirty-two million dollars in new programming. You have spearheaded some of the most historic gains in student performance, graduation rates, access to rigorous, high-quality education, and resources available to schools and children district-wide. The new Fine and Performing Arts Programmatic Change at Emmett Till will make it possible for students who have been systematically kept out of this kind of programming because of class and income, the ability to gain access to high-quality instruction at a Level One-plus school. You have made access to unrivaled education and exposure to immersive and life-changing social experiences the norm for the children in Chicago, especially for those in lower socioeconomic communities where access has been denied, and for that, I cannot thank you enough. Under your leadership, neighborhood schools like Till feel valued and supported. I am proud to work under your direction and excited to be a part of the movement.
Thank you, Ms. Peoples. And our next speaker, please, Nika Gunn, followed by speaker fifty-seven, Raquel Salcedo.
Good morning. Buenos dias. My name is Nika Gunn. I am the principal of Everheart Elementary School. I am also a product of Chicago Public Schools. My school is one of the thirty-two schools receiving a new academic program next year. So on behalf of Everheart School, our entire school community, I want to say thank you. We expect that our addition of dual language will prepare our students to be productive members of the global society and afford them additional opportunities in varied careers in the long term. In the short term, this award helps our school offer the experience of biliteracy and biculturalism to students who otherwise may not have this experience. It allows us to offer for free what wealthy families are able to provide for their children, and that is an international perspective. We are excited about the prospect of our students preparing to earn the seal of biliteracy and how this program supports both native Spanish speakers and heritage speakers, but also those students that, but for this program, might never be exposed to a second language. We are grateful for the year of planning and the additional positions and resources awarded to implement dual language. Thank you for your investment in our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Raquel Salcedo.
Good morning, members of the board, and CEO, Dr. Jackson, thank you, and Sito McDade. We are, Chase School is one of the thirty-two schools who received the Programmatic Designation for STEAM. For our schools particularly, it's important that students have access to this type of programming, as we have six cluster classrooms where students are assigned to our school. And so having a school where they have access to this type of programming is particularly important to those parents and those students. I've been principal for eight years. I've just signed a contract for another four years, and this is the first year that I hear equity, and I don't think rhetoric. I feel like it's tangible. It is definitely tangible at Chase Elementary, and I commend you, all of you, for really standing by your commitment to making resources equitable for all students. In a district our size and with such diversity, it is a challenge, and sometimes it appears insurmountable, but definitely doable. And I know that some people have come here and have said words like, "Shame on you," and I just want to, you know, counter that with, "Thank you," and commend you for what you're doing. And I hope that you continue to make these insightful and innovative decisions. The board, thank you for supporting our Sito and our CEO for continuing with these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the next speakers then will be speaker number fifty-five, please. Tawana Wilks, followed by speaker fifty-four, David Groves.
Good morning. To the board, Chief Jackson, Chief McDade, it is such an honor to stand before you to say thank you. Thank you for allowing my school, Michael Faraday School, to become a part of Number Thirty-two. I am Dr. Williams, and I represent two-hundred-and-sixty students, community members, and family members of the Michael Faraday School. Words cannot express how we felt the moment we were notified that our dream had become true, to become a part of the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. This is a huge honor for the Faraday family. As a little kid from Foster Park, we always had big dreams of the things that we would want to do. I lived in a house of quotas. My dad loved Dr. King, and he would promise us things, and my mom would promise us things. And when they didn't come to patrician, we would say, "Well, how long is this going to take?" And my mom would say, "Go ask your dad." We'd go ask my dad. My dad would say, "Not long." So then we'll go back and ask my mom, "Well, how long?" She'd say, "Go back and ask your dad." "Not long." I had the joy of meeting, and I don't know who made this decision, to send the great Chief Higginbottom over to our network, because she's another famous quota. I would tell Chief, "Chief, I got three hundred pair of gym shoes today, still waiting on some funds." She would say, "Oatmeal is better than oatmeal, Dr. Williams." So you need to be grateful, and I was. I thank you all from the bottom of my heart that you all have selected or someone believed in Michael Faraday Elementary School to allow us to be a part of the thirty-two. Our learning, all learning, will be enhanced, and we will see an increase in the in-depth of knowledge and understanding in all learning experience. We are ready to retrain our teachers and students on global and international strategies as we strengthen how they learn and how they think for themselves, and more importantly, to take more responsibility for their own learning through an inquiry-led approach. My team is ready to fully participate in the professional training together as a staff. Together, we will consistently model all the attitudes and attributes of the PYP program as anchors, knowledgeable thinkers, communicators, principals, open-minded, caring, and risk-takers. The sky is the limit for Michael Faraday, and together with your continued support, your dynamic leadership, we say to you, "Over a cliff, we will follow you wherever you go." We love what you have done for the City of Chicago, for the inner-city students, for our communities. I always say to my great basketball coach, whose school is right behind me and which you all honored, Marshall High School, "I get them at the front door, she gets them at the back door." And that's a blessing, because now, not only are we able to send over great, talented, athletic individuals, but we're also ready to prepare great, authentic, lifelong learners and leaders to some of the best selected high schools in the City of Chicago. My heart, my soul, thank each and every one of you for your wonderful leadership, and we support you, and as my team always tells us, "Over a cliff." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon or good morning. I don't even know what time it is anymore. But my name is David Groves, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Michael Faraday Elementary School, President Clark, my other colleagues, my coworkers at CPS. I stand before you to represent the present and future students and families of Michael Faraday Elementary School IB Baccalaureate PYP program. When I said third-grade teacher, I saw you shift a little bit, because usually we have a lot to say. But I've decided to, like a good teacher would throughout a lesson plan, I'll throughout my speech, there are two things that I would like to sincerely thank you for, and one is the regional analysis that told us what we already knew about the West Side, and the other was the transparent application process that allowed us to share with you something that we already knew about Michael Faraday Elementary School. The other part is, I kind of wax nostalgic. I sat about this far away from Dr. Jackson at a town hall meeting and periodically throughout her presentation with a heartfelt, like I think I'm a pretty good judge of characters as a third-grade teacher, a heartfelt appreciation for teachers who do the heavy lifting at Chicago Public Schools. So what I'd like to do to end is I'd like to invite you, if you have a Ventura card, you can get on the CTA right there, Shoot Down Madison. Our playground address is thirty-two fifty West Madison, and I'd like you to come out and visit Michael Faraday Elementary School, and you will see Olympic gold medal power letter teachers. So you're always welcome. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Groves. And the next speaker, speaker twenty-two, Eileen Mason.
Good afternoon. I am the proud principal of Scott Joplin Elementary School in Auburn-Gresham neighborhood, and I stand not only with my colleagues, but I also brought my parent advisory, parent, PAC, parent with me, Vanessa Dixon, Vincent. I am so, so excited and proud to stand before you today, to represent my school, my school community, our awesome staff, and just the Auburn-Gresham community, to say thank you, to the school board, to our wonderful CEO, giving just credits to everyone here that's represented, because you helped change my baby's lives. We are excited about receiving the Magnet Cluster World Language Program. All of our efforts are really geared and really pushing toward an excellent program to be established here at Scott Joplin School, and this opportunity helps them to become bilingual and establish an access to a comprehensive instructional program and provide global access, thus enhancing our school-wide curriculum. The World Language Program will assist in our promotion of college and career readiness for all students and allow us to engage more families and attract additional talent and promote diversity. The community of Auburn-Gresham and Alderman Moore, thank you for allowing Scott Joplin School to live out its vision, to be an institution of high-quality education for all students, preparing them for a successful high school, post-secondary, and adult career path, becoming productive citizens in a global economy. Our students will take on an active role in their learning, becoming responsible critical thinkers, receiving a global educational experience that will enable them to impact a global society and transform their communities. Again, we say thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to further the lives of the children, particularly in the Auburn-Gresham community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. So now we will go back to speaker number two, please, Dwayne Truss, followed by speaker number three.
Before the next speaker speaks, I want to acknowledge all of the statements, comments made by a variety of school leaders. Two comments. The first speaker made reference to the quote from William Bennett when he was Secretary of Education under, I believe it would be Ronald Reagan. He made those remarks over thirty years ago. I don't think he was correct then, but I'm positive today he would say something very, very different, and I thank a lot the leadership of Dr. Jackson and her senior team and all of you wonderful people who have spoken and expressed how strongly you feel about the leadership at CPS. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Dwayne Truss will be the next speaker, followed by speaker number three, Rebecca Huffman. We then have speaker thirteen, Carla Kemp, and speaker twenty-nine, Connie Chee.
Good morning, members of the board of education and CPS and senior staff. Could you guys pretend that I won as Alderman so I can get a few extra minutes by any chance? You know, you don't have to tell anybody I won if you don't. But I'd like, first of all, to say thank you very much for establishing the IB program at Michelle Clark Magna High School. The investment at Michelle Clark will allow for vertical alignment with existing IB programs that exist at Ellington and Dupree Schools. I know that we all wish we had that magic one in which, you know, we can make it rain when it comes down to money for our kids in education, and I understand the constraints that CPS has, but I do have somewhat of a problem with the process of the schools having and struggling, in a sense, kind of having to compete against each other for some of these programs to bring equity into our communities and neighborhoods, because some of the affluent neighborhoods with existing programs didn't seem like they had to go ahead and compete. But also ask that you don't quite focus on just the college prep, academic programs. Vacational programs, I said before, are solely needed in our neighborhood. You know, Mike and I both got ESPN with each other, and we just agree with that because all our children are going to college. But at the same time, they need to go ahead and be exposed to different career paths so that way, when they leave high school, they have an option, either be an entrepreneur by going into HVAC or just going into the workforce. We just, because we still severely, we being Black folks on the West Side, still underrepresented in the building trades, for instance. And we just believe establishing programs that provide career paths for those who may not want to attend college is great, but we also look that it could be a possibility that adults could benefit from it, because we got a lot of folks in their late thirties, early, late twenties, early thirties who's unemployed. But we also need to look at preparing our children for jobs in the green industry, like, for instance, solar panel installers and wind turbine technicians. I listed the top two fastest-growing occupations by the Bureau of Labor statistic. Because the population's getting older, there still is a strong demand for CNAs and LPNs within the healthcare industry, and there's also growth within the smart home sector that, you know, a lot of people are, you know, investing in the smart homes, and it'd be a great opportunity for our children to learn that. And, you know, job development programs are truly the economic development tool of the future, and I thank you very much. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that we lost our dear friend and former CAT chairperson, Mildred Wiley. We all miss her, and we all hopefully, down the road somewhere that she can get her family to get honored for her career service on the West Side.
Thank you, Ms. Press.
As well as for education at CPS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Nevers Huffman, and I proudly serve as the Executive Director of City Year Chicago. This current academic year, we are partnered with twenty-eight Chicago Public Neighborhood Schools throughout the district, and there's a demand for our program. We currently have twenty-five schools on our waiting list, which are primarily Level Two schools located across the South and West sides of the city. I've come here before to talk about all the external research that affirms the impact of our program, but today, thanks to our automated data sharing agreement with the district, I've got what we love to call mid-year data delights to share with you. First, in ELA, sixty-three percent of our students have met over, have met fifty percent of their growth targets or higher. Twenty-nine percent of students have already met or exceeded their growth targets for the entire year. We serve in seven high schools and have already exceeded our freshman-on-track goal for the year, as we currently sit at eighty-eight point four percent. Last year, we ended the school year at ninety-seven point eight percent freshman-on-track. Last year, we ended the school year at 97.8% freshman-on-track, which we expect to reach or beat by the end of this school year. So who are these amazing student success coaches who comprise the core of our full-time mentors and academic tutors for our kids? They wear the red jacket, which over the years has become a symbol of trust and a symbol of love in our communities. It's not a superhero cape. 80% of our student success coaches are taking a gap year after college, and the top feeder schools that they come from are University of Michigan Ann Arbor, U of I, Washington University in St. Louis, and Notre Dame. But you know what I'm most proud of as someone that grew up in Humboldt Park and graduated from this program? Is the fact that the majority of our core is incredibly local talent, many of them CPS school grads themselves, who come back to serve and encourage their students in only the way that they can. So today, I come to you to say thank you for granting us the privilege, this privilege, to serve the brilliant students of our district.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. And our next speaker, please, 13, Carla Kemp.
Before the next speaker, I am the proud bearer of a red jacket, and I do believe that City Year is an extraordinary program, and I'd love to see it expanded. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carla Kemp, and I am the proud principal of Dunne School of Excellence, right here on the South Side of Chicago. And I was asked by City Year just to give a little, just to give a little view as to how they have impacted my students. And so one of the things they do well that kind of encompasses everything is that they are our attendance leaders. So they make calls, they find out why a student was absent the day, the next day, they let us know if there's somebody that we should check on, which is huge for us. And so that trickles into the fact that for math right now, which is something really awesome for us, for their focus group, we have 95% that are maintaining a C or higher in their instruction. We are also, for a lot of our spring targets, for math, we have 50% that have already met their spring targets, and this is based on their focus group. But one thing that I really think is great about our City Year team members is that they realize that they have to build relationships with our children. And so they know the importance of rearing them with education, but they also take time to get to know them. And so a lot of times when our teachers can't reach a particular child, they have what they call a near-peer relationship. And so they'll open up to that child, and they'll find out what we need to do to help them be successful. I am excited about City Year. City Year is something that I have been, I've been in CPS for about 20 years now, and every school that I've been involved in has had a City Year team member, a City Year presence, and I have seen great success with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, Mr. President, will be speaker number 35, please, Raoul Magdaleno, followed by speaker number four, Sarah Dennis. Speaker 34, Karen Cruz. And speaker 50, Anna Marie Sanchez.
Want to start this? Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Raoul Magdaleno. I'm the principal of Thomas Kelly High School. And I just want to echo what my colleagues have said about Dr. Jackson and her team. I would not be in this position because I was thinking of leaving administration a couple of years ago until this decision was made, because I am also a product of CPS, teacher, administrator, and a CPS parent. And keeping to our core values, I would like to yield my time to our student.
Good morning. My name is Hector Rabadan. I am currently a senior at Thomas Kelly High School, and I am involved in many programs at Kelly, such as Avid, Skills USA, volleyball, and soccer. Over the past four years, Kelly High School has given me and all my classmates a tremendous amount of opportunities to earn college credit. I and many of my classmates have taken advantage of these opportunities. I, for one, am currently enrolled in dual-credit classes, dual enrollment, and AP courses. Kelly has made great strides in preparing students for college, for college, the world, and career. Kelly currently offers six out of the seven ways that a student can earn college credit. Kelly currently offers 27 out of the maximum 29 credits in dual-credit, and in addition, we participate in dual enrollment classes. Kelly currently offers 12 sections of AP classes, and next year, we are adding AP capstone and AP computer principles. Kelly has been in IB schools since 1999, and we have been doing IB for longer than most schools. I believe it is time that our name reflects the actual work that is happening on a daily basis. Thomas Kelly College Prep is the school that our community needs, and most importantly, it's a school that the Brighton Park community wants. Kelly High School is the reason I am college and career and world-ready, and we would greatly appreciate your support on adopting the name, Thomas Kelly College Prep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, we only allow registered speakers to speak, so you really can't do your time, but you did such an outstanding job. I have to give you credit for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, speaker number four, Sarah Dennis. As the next group approaches, we will then call speaker number six, Marelia Kroom, followed by speaker number seven, Nat Mills Gray, speaker number eight, Clara Campos, and speaker 31, Miguel Colon. Thank you.
Hello. On behalf of Heather Miller, the Executive Director of the American Indian Center, I will read this message. Good afternoon, and thank you to everyone for taking time to listen to the various concerns surrounding the name change of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Here in Chicago, we are home to the third-largest urban Indian population in the country. We might be a small community, but as native folks of this land, we strongly believe that our voices matter, and finding ways to shed light on us as a community is important for our youth to feel a sense of pride, ownership, and understanding. We are advocating for this name change because we want to share our own stories and histories with the larger community. Changing the name of this holiday is the first step towards acknowledging a more accurate history of our community. At a recent meeting with the CPS Director of Equity and Inclusion, we learned that a name share for this year was possible. I would like to thank CPS for taking this step. We also, we all agreed, however, that this is not the end. We are continuing to advocate for a complete name change, as well as the creation of a curriculum that will help educate the larger community regarding the importance of the name change. Thank you to everyone who has provided support on this issue, including 2,800 people who have signed the petition to date in support of the name change. We look forward to continued work together to change the name and provide education to all. In addition to what Heather said, shared, I'd like to add that I'm thrilled that CPS has promised that the name share will be on your April agenda for a vote, and that the complete name change will happen in 2020 and beyond. So the 2019-2020 school year will be a transition year where the American Indian Center community and other supporters can work with CPS to develop curriculum, to support teachers and students to learn a more accurate history than many of us were taught, and will also support children, youth, families, teachers in learning about the 65,000 Native people who live in Chicago area today. We received a letter of support from State Representative Will Gazardi and have had many alderpeople and candidates for alderperson positions supporting the name change. We've reached out to both mayoral candidates and have growing support among nonprofits in the area, such as Grow Your Own. We're continuing to organize and educate, and thank you for your commitment to doing what's right for the Chicago public school community.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, please, speaker 34, Karen Cruz.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Karen Cruz, and I am from Hammond Elementary School. And today, I'm going to talk about why we should change Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day. We should change the day to Indigenous People's Day because Columbus really didn't discover America. The Indians were already living here. A lot of people think Columbus is a nice person who discovered America, but Columbus is really mean. He sailed to America and found the Indians already living there. They traded gold and other objects. Columbus made the Indians his slaves, and if they did not work hard, Columbus would cut the Indians' fingers or heads and make them into color. Also, the Indians and Columbus and his people had a war, and it was not fair because the Indians only had bows and arrows, and Columbus had guns. A lot of Indians died. That's why I want to change Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Our next speaker, please, speaker 50, Anna Marie Sanchez.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Sanchez. I'm from Hammond Elementary. I'm going to talk about Christopher Columbus. Christopher Columbus was a bad person. In 1492, he sailed from Spain across the Atlantic Ocean to the Southwest. There, he found the, named the Tino Indianos. They treed, treed objects, but when they didn't have nothing, Christopher Columbus made them slaves. About 5,000 Indians were slaves. If they didn't work hard, Christopher Columbus cut their heads or fingers. Over 5,000 Indians got killed from, from disease, stretcher, and size. After that, Christopher Columbus and his brother got arrested by being guilty. When he got out, he got out, he sailed from two years, two years, and died when he was 50, 50 years old. That's why we should, that's why we should not celebrate him and change it to Indigenous People's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
Since they were both under one minute, can we have one more? She wasn't allowed to register because it was full, but...
Yeah, no, the two that spoke did a fantastic job. Thank you so much. By the way, General Counsel, what have we done? What are we doing?
So next month, there will be on the board's agenda an amendment to our next year's academic calendar to change the name of the Columbus Day observance to Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day observance.
And we've also committed to continuing conversation because they've made clear they want a full change. So we'll continue those conversations, but where we are right now is the name share. Thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, speaker number six, Marelia Kroom.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marelia Kroom. I am a second-grade math teacher and one of the mentor teachers at Catalyst Circle Rock on the West Side. I've been employed by the network for eight years. This is my 17th year as a teacher, with my previous nine years being in North Carolina. There are many reasons why Catalyst Circle Rock is special, but I've narrowed it down to three. First, the families. Second, the teachers. And third, the relationship. The families we service on the West Side entrust us with their most precious gifts. These families have many options when deciding on schools, and year after year, child after child, they choose Catalyst Circle Rock. Why, you ask? It's simple. Catalyst cares. Catalyst cares not about just what you understand academically, but also who you'll become based on your character. As teachers, we try to instill our scholars with values that will shape their lives for the future. Secondly, the teachers. Teachers at Catalyst spend long hours at school and at home to ensure that we give our scholars the best that we have. We've been doing so since our doors have been opened and plan to continue to offer the families on the West Side our absolute best, as they are so deserving. Catalyst Circle Rocks just happens to, I'm sorry, Catalyst is a special place because the teachers at Circle Rock just happen to be the best I know, and after 17 years, I know a lot of teachers. Lastly, Catalyst is special because we seek to build relationships. Relationship is one of our core missions. We build work relationships, teacher-to-scholar relationship, as well as teacher-to-parent relationship. Relationships is at the core of what we believe. Catalyst is a special school because Catalyst cares about the teachers, the scholars, and the parents in our building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kroom. And our next speaker, Mr. President, speakers will be speaker number eight, Clara Campos, and 31, Miguel Colon, followed by speaker number nine, Alexander Alanitis, 48, Christanzos Kerkeris, followed by speaker number 11, Joseph Pace. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Clara Campos, parent of a second-grade student and a local school council parent representative at George Washington Elementary School. As a mother that worked so hard to take care of my child and do everything in my power to keep my child healthy, it is very upsetting that I had to send him to a school that is in such terrible shape, that we think is making kids, teachers, and staff sick. One important thing that you can do is give us a timeline to remove the 45-year-old carpet. We need to know when it will be removed. We need an evacuation plan for the second-floor students. They need a plan to make it out safely in the case of emergency. Also, the condition of the school are impacting the recovery time from colds, flu, strep, and pink eye due to the lack of the bedroom sinks. What we need is a new school facility that will have enough bedrooms for the number of students at the school, so they can wash their hands with soap and water and stop the spread of the germs. The annex building that was built for the older grades is not connected to the main building, and our kids have to go outside six times a day to go to lunch, gym, and other classes. Even in inclement weather, can you imagine what they had to go through when it was literally cold this winter? And when it's been raining? What we need is a new school, because these Band-Aids approaches that are very costly and are not giving the, I'm not getting to the root of the problem. Until then, we need to, you to please, add a cover shelter so the students can go back and forth, are fully protected. The conditions at George Washington Elementary School are harming our kids, teachers, and staff every day. I'm deeply concerned that this board has known about the conditions at our school, and is still not giving us a timeline to build a new building for removing the 45-year-old carpet and many other issues that need to be fixed as soon as possible.
Ms. Campos.
We demand that you act quickly to address the serious problems that is affecting every child, every teacher, and every staff person, respiratory health. It is unfair that our kids are expected to succeed in these conditions. Thank you for your time, and I hope to please have a written, written answers from the board as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And their next speaker, Mr. President, is speaker 31, Miguel Colon, please.
Good afternoon. I'm excited to be here speaking to you on behalf of the parents that have joined me today. We are collectively advocating for the students of George Washington Elementary School. We are thankful for the responsiveness of the board and of the previous issues. However, I implore the board to be more fiscally responsible. Funds being utilized for short-term fixes can best be allocated in procurement for a new school development. I ask that this process begin this summer of 2019. George Washington Elementary School is structurally unsustainable. It is past its end of life. The facility is not conducive for delivering a quality education and preparation for our students completing at the global economy level. Ignoring our calls to action are a disservice to the community and the children in attendance. The facility is a structural hazard. It would be an embarrassment to the board and CPS if this building ever went up in fire. It is one electrical shortage of burning down. I ask you, board members, to join our Coalition of Parents Coalition and show us your commitment to providing innovative, modern, and educational facility for George Washington Elementary School. I want this drafted in letter in support of the 10th Ward Community in a new school. Give us your time, your resources, and your commitment to deliver this new facility for our children. Come visit our town, walk through our neighborhood, and see the needs of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colon.
Ernie, I assume that you're aware of the situation?
Yeah, and I actually had an opportunity to visit the school probably about a month and a half ago, spoke to a number of them. There is going to be a lot of work that begins this summer. Obviously, you know, even if a new school were to be constructed, that's years away, we have an obligation to make sure that we start work this summer, including the pulling of the carpet on the second floor and putting, you know, tiling on there. So I met with that, at the budget meeting on Monday, met with Mr. Ramirez, kind of gave him an overview of what we're planning, and we'll make sure to follow up with him relative to the timeline that they can expect for the summer.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, speaker number nine, Alexander Alanitis.
Hi, good afternoon. Thanks for taking a few minutes to speak with me. My name is Alexander Alanitis. I am a Lakeview High School teacher, physical education, health education, and driver education. I sent Ms. Ellis a bunch of material prior to prepare you, and I also provided it today. I'm sure that you will see that. The general basis of this is that six years ago, not as a CPS employee, actually went back to college. There was an accusation that was made about me that turned out to be, according to Mr. Polacco, your CPS investigators, you guys investigated it, turned out to be not credible. Six months later, I was told that I am, quote-unquote, "teacher incompetent." I provided my reach ratings, all, first-year teacher, almost at a proficient status for a first-year CPS teacher with 53 students. I was then told that I falsified my resume. All my resume is correct. So, that being said here, I have been on basically reassignment since August. The reason I am a CPS teacher is because of the diversity that I see in the schools. My mother here was a CPS teacher for 20 years, just retired, and she currently subs. So what I am asking is that you guys investigated everything, and everything turned out with no credible evidence. I'd like to go back to Lakeview High School, where my coworkers support me, where my students like me. You know, the last thing that I can be is put on a... You know, the last thing that I can be is put on a do-not-hire list. That's where I stand. So, everything is said, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alanitis. And the next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirk-
My name is Father Chris. You can say Chris. It's easier. Father Chris, I must say, to begin, I'm proud being here, not only for Alexander, but as a product of the CPS schools. I'm really energized hearing a lot of this and seeing this. As you know, I'm not here to vouch for Alexander as his teaching abilities. That's not my job. I'm his priest. I'm here to say that I've kind of gone on this journey with him and seeing the peaks and valleys, the valleys of being accused, the peaks of being cleared, and then kind of the valleys again, seeing him go up and down through this journey. And I can tell you that he's a loving husband, a good father, a dedicated member of our community, our faith community, active in our outreach programs, and is a good person. And seeing his love for his job as an educator, seeing the way he respects education and the children, I just wanted to be here to support him, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our next speaker is Joseph Pace. As he approaches the podium, I will call Speaker number twelve, please, Maria Vialva. Speaker fifteen, Tamara Draper. Twenty-three, Latricia Clayborne. And twenty-four, Swanny Triplet. Mr. Pace?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Pace. I'm here to speak again about an issue I've been speaking on for quite some time right now. I spoke on how my last assignment for CPS is Skinner North, how two administrators conspired to misuse a diverse learner in order to take a minor disciplinary action against me. All evidence supports the claims that I've been making, which at this point have actually escalated to both of those administrators. While maybe not lying, certainly mischaracterizing and presenting misleading information under oath. One example of that is they mischaracterized a thirty-minute open-door interrogation that I endured last school year with one of those administrators, former assistant principal Nicole Spicer, saying that A, that questioning lasts two minutes, and that the door was open because they have an open-door policy. Not that it was done to harass or embarrass me. Again, I've been speaking on behalf of diverse learners because they're the most vulnerable student population, and they should not be used as pawns for two administrators who take a work-related disagreement personally. So far, the school board has demonstrated a lack of basic levels of inquisitiveness about this matter, because every time I speak, I leave these meetings lacking engagement or even acknowledgement. I get that it would be maybe uncomfortable to disrupt not one, but two leaderships at two of Chicago selective enrollment schools, but you have to look into this matter.
Mr. Pace?
There's a right thing to do, which is what I'm doing by standing up for students. There's a wrong thing to do, which those two administrators did. And then there's doing nothing, which so far this school board has done. Thank you.
And Chief Medley, are you aware of the situation?
I do have some knowledge of this individual coming before the board. I would defer to legal on this one.
Yes, this was a matter that was investigated in the law department.
Correct. Nobody spoke to me about it. How could there be an investigation? False.
So, there was a hearing in the Office of Employee Engagement involving-
That did not involve this matter, but that is where they told their lies. Again, don't claim an investigation took place, and no one sitting in front of me has spoke to me about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker, please, Maria Vialva.
Hola, mi nombre es Maria Vialva. Soy mamá de Monserrat, una estudiante de la escuela de UIC College Prep.
Hi, my name is Maria Vialva. My daughter Monserrat is a student at UIC College Prep.
Yo escogí esta escuela porque una amiga nos contó de su experiencia y nos invitó al Open House. No nos avergonzamos de dónde venimos, pero buscamos una mejor escuela porque yo sentía que quedarse en nuestra comunidad era como estancarse en un lugar que no le va a ayudar a crecer. Yo siempre le he inculcado a mis hijos que quiero que crezcan sus expectativas y no se estanquen en donde se sientan seguros. Desde que entró a la UIC hemos visto que subieron sus calificaciones y empezó a darse sus propias metas. Quiere graduarse con honores y le pone mucho empeño.
I chose this school because a friend told us about her experience and invited us to the Open House. We're not ashamed of where we come from, but we were looking for a better school because I felt that staying in our community was not going to help her grow. I've always encouraged my children to raise their expectations and to get out of their comfort zone. Since she entered UIC, we have seen improvement on her grades, and she started to set her own goals. She wants to graduate with honors, and she puts a lot of effort into it.
Últimamente me he sentido juzgada por otros padres por escoger esta escuela para mi hija. Tuve una situación en la que alguien está involucrado con CPS, me juzgó por llevar a mi hija a UIC. Me preguntó que si sabía que esas escuelas le estaban robando dinero a CPS y dijo que ya no metería a sus hijos ahí. Y yo como no estaba informada, no me pude defender. Me sentí impotente.
Lately, I've felt judged by other parents because I chose this school for my daughter. I had a situation where someone who was involved with CPS judged me for sending my daughter to UIC. She asked me if I knew that those schools were stealing money from CPS, and she said that she wouldn't send her children there. Because I was not informed at the time, I couldn't defend myself, and I felt powerless.
Ahora que he ido a las juntas y me he informado más, sé que esta escuela ha estado bajo contrato con CPS. Son parte de CPS y tienen cinco años para demostrar que vale la pena para que las dejen permanecer abiertas. Ahora cuando esta persona me ha molestado, me he podido defender, y ahora cuando les cuento a esta persona que mi hija va a viajar a Tailandia y a Nueva York y que toca el saxofón en la banda de la escuela, se queda sorprendida de todas las oportunidades que mi hija ha tenido.
Now that I have gone to meetings and I have informed myself more, I know that these schools are under contract with CPS. They are part of CPS. They have five years to show that they are worthy to be remained open. Now, when this person criticizes me, I'm able to defend myself. And now, when I tell this person that my daughter is going to travel to Thailand and New York and that she plays the saxophone in the school band, she's surprised at all the opportunities my daughter has had.
Siento que deberíamos tratar de remediar la relación entre los padres de escuelas públicas tradicionales y escuelas públicas charter. Yo no soy una persona mala por exigir una buena escuela para mi hija y no sé quién esté aconsejando estas personas y dando esta información incorrecta que en vez de mejorar la colaboración entre los dos tipos de escuelas, la está empeorando.
I feel we should try to remedy the relationship between parents of traditional public schools and public charter school. I'm not a bad person for demanding a good school for my daughter, and I don't know who is advising these people and giving them wrong information instead of improving the collaboration between these two types of schools. This is making the schools worse.
Mi hija es mi orgullo y un orgullo para toda la familia. No deberíamos de aislar a las familias que han escogido esta escuela. Al contrario, deberíamos colaborar más para ver por qué han tenido tanto éxito. El llevar a mi hija a UIC ha sido una de las mejores decisiones que mi familia pudo hacer.
My daughter is my pride and a pride for the whole family. We shouldn't isolate the families that have chosen this school. Instead, we should collaborate more to see why they have been so successful. Sending my daughter to UIC has been one of the best decisions my family could have made. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker, please, Tamara Draper.
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Tamara Draper. I just wanted to say I attended Michael Faraday, also Walt Disney Grammar School, and I also attended John Marshall, and all those schools happen to be here today, so that was very interesting. However, I'm standing today as a proud parent of a student that attends DRW Prep, a Noble school in North Longdale. I learned through my school, that CPS offices of invocation and incubation have been visiting Noble campus, and one of their questions I've been to ask why parents are choosing Noble. Fortunately, I can help you with that question. I can't speak for all parents, but I want to tell you why I chose to send my son to DRW. As a parent, I chose DRW for my son because of many reasons. First of all, it's one of the schools in my community that provided the quality education that I was looking for for my child. I believe that Noble offers the diversity that I was looking for, location was important for me, which is why I chose DRW in my neighborhood. DRW will give him the support to be a successful and real-rounded person so that he would have a better chance of being accepted to a college. I researched Noble Network, and it seemed to meet the standards that I have for my son, and that is to attend college. Now that he's a senior, his mannerism, attitude, and appearance that he has worked on at DRW will carry him successfully through the next part of his life. That makes a difference when he goes looking for a job. Along with other parents, I look forward to answering more questions or any questions for the board meeting. Thank you for supporting our schools and our students.
Thank you, Ms. Draper. And the next speaker, please, Latricia Clayborne.
Hello, my name is Latricia Clayborne, and I am an alumni from DRW College Prep class of 2017. Right now, I am working as an assistant for the IEP Case Manager at DRW, amongst other things. I will be a part of the first class of Noble Forward, a new program at Noble that allows me to take online classes to get my bachelor's degree. I am here today with other Noble parents to tell you more about why I chose Noble and to invite anyone who wants to visit our schools to come. When people say negative things about charter schools, I'm confused a little bit. I want to learn more about why they are saying the negative things they are saying. I want to know if they had every, I want to know if they ever been to my school, experienced the class life, and ask the students how they feel, if they experienced what I experienced. I think they would think differently. My mom chose DRW because she knew I needed structure. My behavior in grammar school was not the best. I remember one time a boy came in and threw pum pum's at me. I would think, why are you doing that? I'm trying to do my work. I wanted to learn. But I would get caught up in things like this. I always had good grades, but there wasn't enough structure to allow me to focus on my work. My stepbrother went to Johnson College Prep, another Noble school. The structure helped him to do well, so my mom thought the structure at DRW would do the same, and it did. I also didn't want classes to be too big. That helped with less distractions, too. I took honors and AP classes, and they prepared me for college courses that I needed to take. I'll tell you this, because this was a great choice for me, and I think if more people saw my school, they would agree. Then maybe we could collaborate and learn from one another. I'm inviting anyone that wants to visit my school to come and visit. Then you can see where I went to school and what helped me grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Clayborne. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number fourteen, Tamika Johnson, followed by Speaker number seventeen, Howard Brown. We then have Speaker number eighteen, Anel Garcia, and Speaker thirty, Guadalupe Flores. Tamika Johnson, last call. The next speaker, Speaker seventeen, Howard Brown. Moving on to Speaker number eighteen, Anel Garcia and Guadalupe Flores, please.
Buenas tardes, Presidente Clark, distinguidos miembros de la junta, y Dr. Jackson.
Good morning, President Clark, distinguished board members, and Dr. Jackson.
Mi nombre es Anel Garcia. Hoy estoy aquí para hablar de la escuela de mis hijos, Escuela Primaria Marquez, la cual es parte de la red de las escuelas Azero. Tengo dos hijos en esa escuela. Yael está en quinto grado, e Ysel está en segundo grado.
My name is Anel Garcia. I'm here today to talk about my children's school, Marquez Elementary, which is part of the Azero Schools Network. I have two children at the school. Yael is in fifth grade, and Ysel is in second grade.
Marquez es la mejor escuela de mi barrio, y me siento orgullosa de mandar a mis hijos ahí. Me encanta Marquez porque tiene el nivel académico, es excelente. La escuela impone altas expectativas sobre sus alumnos porque creen en ellos y saben que son capaces de grandes cosas. Los maestros y el personal son maravillosos. Son sumamente dedicados a mis hijos. Y yo tengo la confianza de que mis hijos son respetados y atendidos en Marquez.
Marquez is the best school in my neighborhood, and I'm proud to send my children there. I love Marquez because the academic level is excellent. The school places high expectations on their schools because they believe in them and know that they're capable of great things. The teachers and staff are wonderful. They are so dedicated to my kids. I have confidence that my children are respected and cared for at Marquez.
Marquez también tiene un ambiente muy acogedor y de apoyo a las familias. A través de Marquez, he avanzado al segundo nivel de clases de I O C O, que son diferentes, que son disponibles a través de los programas para padres proporcionados por Azero. Estoy muy agradecida por esta oportunidad de mejorar mis conocimientos de inglés. Yo también soy voluntaria en la escuela y apoyo en los eventos escolares cuando puedo. Es muy gratificante trabajar con los padres, maestros, y personal para apoyar a nuestros hijos. Hay tantas personas involucradas que están profundamente dedicados a nuestra comunidad escolar.
Marquez is also very welcoming and supportive of families. Through Marquez, I have advanced to the second-level ESL classes, which are made available through Azero's parent program. I'm also thankful for this opportunity to improve my English language skills. I also volunteer at the school and support its events whenever I can. It's very rewarding to work with other parents, teachers, and staff to support our children. There are so many people involved who are deeply invested in the school community.
Quería compartir todo esto con CPS y la junta porque ha habido tantas negatividades últimamente sobre escuelas charter. Por eso deseo que todos ustedes sepan que hay muchos padres como yo que amamos a nuestras escuelas charter y las consideramos la mejor opción para nuestros hijos. Por favor, tengan en cuenta nuestras perspectivas al tomar decisiones que afecten a las escuelas charter, especialmente cuando y cómo son financiadas. Les pido que den un trato equitativo a las escuelas de mis hijos. Gracias.
I wanted to share all this with CPS and the board because there has been so much negativity lately about charter school. So, I want you all to know that there are many parents out there like me who love our charter school and find them to be the best choice for our kids. Please consider our feedback when making decisions that impact charter schools, especially how and when you fund them. I urge you to give fair treatment to my children's school. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And the next speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker number thirty, please, Guadalupe Flores.
Buenas tardes, Presidente Clark, distinguidos miembros de la junta, y Dr. Jackson.
Good morning, President Clark, distinguished board members, and Dr. Jackson.
Mi nombre es Guadalupe Flores. Hoy estoy aquí para hablar de la escuela de mis niños, la Escuela Primaria Tamayo. La escuela es parte de la red de las escuelas Azero. Tengo cinco niños que asisten a Tamayo. Cuatro de ellos están en tercer grado, y la mayor está en sexto grado.
My name is Guadalupe Flores. I'm here today to talk about my children's school, Tamayo Elementary, which is an Azero school. I have five children attending Tamayo. Four of them are in third grade, and the oldest is in sixth grade.
Estoy muy agradecida de poder mandar a mis hijos a Tamayo. Tamayo es la mejor escuela en mi barrio, y ha sido el entorno para que mis hijos crezcan y aprendan. Están recibiendo una educación excelente en Tamayo, y estoy emocionada por ver cómo esta experiencia les va a preparar para tener éxito en la vida. Es muy importante para mí tener la oportunidad de elegir a dónde mandar a mis hijos a la escuela.
I'm so thankful to be able to send my children to Tamayo. Tamayo is the best school in the neighborhood, and it has been such a great environment for my kids to learn and to grow. They are receiving a great education at Tamayo, and I'm excited about how this will set them up for success in life. It is very important to me to have had the opportunity to choose where I send my kids to school.
No solo es un gran lugar para mis hijos, sino también ha sido muy útil para mí como madre. Participo en la comunidad escolar así como apoyar eventos especiales y abogar a favor de las escuelas charter in Springfield también. He avanzado en el segundo nivel del programa ESL ofrecido en Tamayo. La escuela es una maravillosa oportunidad.
It's not only a great place for my kids, but it's been very helpful for me as a parent as well. I'm active in the school community, volunteering to support special events and advocating for charter schools. advocating for charter schools in Springfield. I've also reached the second level of the ESL program offered at Tamayo, which is a wonderful opportunity.
Creo que es realmente importante para mí compartir esto con CPS y la junta porque lo que dicen acerca de las escuelas chartered tan a menudo no coincide con la experiencia mía y de mis hijos en Tamayo. A mis hijos les encanta la escuela así como a los maestros y el personal escolar. Me acompañan aquí otros padres de Azero, a quienes vinieron aquí hoy para mostrar su apoyo a las escuelas de sus hijos, y les pedimos financiar nuestras escuelas de manera justa. Gracias.
I think it's very important for me to share this with CPS and the board because the way people are talking about charter schools so often is not in line with mine and my children's experience at Tamayo. My children love their school as well as their teachers and staff there. Other Azero parents have joined me here today to show their support for their children's school, and we are asking you to fund our schools fairly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and our next speakers will be from Shores, and we have Speaker number 19, Dorothy Barrett, 21, Catherine Moran, 36, Tara Cullen, 40, Melissa Balog, and 59, Ms. Barrett?
Yes, before I start, I would like to ask President Clark, one of our speakers, Catherine Moran, became ill in the washroom and left. I wanted to respectfully ask if one of our students, Nick Lopez, could speak in her
It's ceding time, Mr. President, to a stu-
Sorry.
They're requesting to cede the time of a speaker to a student that did not register.
Let's wait until the very end. I'll reconsider it then.
Okay, the end of our group?
No, the end of our presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, make a note of that so I don't forget.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barrett?
All right. Good morning. My name is Dee Barrett, and as a 14-year resident of the Old Irving Park Neighborhood, a dedicated CPS parent of three, and proud Shores High School employee, I have been reasons to be angered by the debacle that has become the Shores Athletic Field. As a resident of this community and homeowner living steps away from the construction site, I am and have always been in support of this project. Shores is our neighborhood high school, and any investment in it benefits not only the immediate community, but our school community as well. Initially and for various reasons, there was pushback from many longtime residents of Old Irving Park, so in an effort to address community concerns, Alderman Arena and his staff have worked and continue to work side by side with the community, and in some instances even making home visits to address individual concerns. It's very disappointing, therefore, that despite all of these efforts to bring the community together around this project, it continues to languish because of foolish decisions by CPS. We've been saddled with a construction company that has missed nearly every deadline they've set since the project began in September. Why would CPS continue to do business with a vendor that has been in breach of contract on this project since then? You'll see in the timeline included in your materials that when the first completion deadline for this project was missed, the second completion deadline was in November. Fast forward to February 12th, and the timeline we were given for the next phase of construction would start on February 18th, weather permitting. It's March 27th, and not only has the aforementioned work not been completed, barely even started in fact, the construction company has worked fewer than 12 days of the 32 working days since February 12th. My children have watched me pour my time and effort into a school where I have no children of my own for the last five years, first as a volunteer and now as an employee. I've taught them the importance of community and having pride in their school. This community and school have worked hard for the last five years to bring this project to fruition, and the joy that we experienced when the project finally broke ground has been replaced with despair and sadness as our student athletes come to the realization that they will never play a game on their field before they graduate. They've come to the sad realization that Shores is a school that CPS has forgotten about. The most recent timeline received from Key Construction indicated completion of the field by April 28th. I expect this deadline will be met. How do you plan to ensure that it will be met?
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. And the next speaker, please, Tara Cullen.
My name is Tara Tidwell Cullen. I've lived in the Old Irving Park Neighborhood for 12 years, and I'm a CPS Neighborhood Elementary School parent. I'm here as a board member for the nonprofit organization Friends of Shores. About five years ago, a group of Old Irving neighbors and Shores alumni came together because we saw that the school and its students were not getting the support they needed or deserved. We reached out to the administration and asked how we could help, and we were welcomed with open arms. Since launching Friends of Shores, we've gotten to know teachers, staff, and administrators who are dedicated and caring administrators, and students who are bright and creative and truly care about our world. Shores has gone above and beyond to open its doors to the neighborhood, even as they are forced to operate with only two-thirds of the engineering staff they should have for a school of its size. But the bubbling and crumbling paint on the walls is becoming harder to ignore in the auditorium and the library, including on the murals that have helped the school secure a place on the National Register of Historic Places. We hear stories of flooded hallways after rainstorms and we see the moldy carpets in the library, and we have heard from teachers whose doctors say that the building is making them ill. And we've already heard, we have, you have letters in your packets from students about how the toll that this is taking on the students' health and well-being. CPS should be ashamed that it's allowed this building to deteriorate so much, and CPS should be ashamed that the athletic field project, which was supposed to be a positive investment in our school and community, has fallen so far off track. As neighbors and Friends of Shores, we are here today to tell you that we demand better. We have three demands. First, follow through on your promise to complete this field by April 28th. Second, assign a third full-time dedicated engineer to Shores. And third, work with us to address the roof and tuck pointing issues and the other capital improvement needs that the school has so that it can continue to be a safe and healthy place for the Northwest Chicago's children for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. And their next speaker, Mr. President, Speaker 40, please, Melissa Balog.
Good afternoon. My name's Melissa Balog. I'm a parent of two children at Shores High School. I also am representing Logan Square Neighborhood Association and their Parent in Action Program. I am also working in the bilingual department, and I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Lee Stein, and this is her letter. My name is Lee Stein. I'm the chairman of the Shores LSC, where my son is a 10th grader. It's a beautiful school with a devoted staff and faculty and bright students whom, quite frankly, deserve better than what you've given them. The capital repairs needed for this school has been an ongoing issue for years now and completely ignored. This year, several Shores sports teams competing with other school teams had not proper, had no proper facilities in which to practice. This in itself is a testament to the spirit of our students and faculty. The Association of School Business Officials states that an eight-hour custodian should be able to work 20, to be able to work 20,000 square feet of building. Shores is 500,000 square feet, which would require 20 full-time janitors according to the recommendation. Currently, Shores has nine one-third of which are subs and do not, and don't know the building. This is unacceptable. It's time to pay attention to Shores and give this school what it needs to operate and flourish. We therefore expect that Shores High School will, one, retain its two terrific engineers, Bill and Steve, two, add a full-time, non-floating third engineer, and three, get assigned at least five more full-time-
Ms. Balog.
-non-floating custodian staffs.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Lynn Ankeny.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Ankeny, and I serve as president of the Old Irving Park Association. Active since 1983, OIPA is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) resident-based community group with over 500-member households. We educate and inform our neighbors to maintain and enhance our quality of life and serve as a liaison to all of our elected officials voicing the current concerns of our, of our residents. Shores High School has been a part of the Old Irving Park community for over a century. At over 500,000 square feet and CPS's third-largest building, it looms large and sits at the southwest corner of our one-square-mile neighborhood. It's so vast that I've used it as a beacon from the Willis Tower when trying to find our little pocket of the city. It's that big. And while Shores is an architectural gem recognized by the city of Chicago as a landmark building, it is in desperate need of immediate attention. There are three areas of investment CPS must take to ensure Shores is a healthy and safe place for students and a draw for families residing in the school's attendance boundary. Number one, capital improvements. You have already or will receive the assessment reports completed by experts in the field regarding the critical roof repairs and tuck pointing necessary to stem water damage and related health hazards. Number two, the Shores Athletic Field. Our community has done our best to be patient during the construction of this new field, which has included the complete shutdown of Waveland Avenue off of Milwaukee Avenue. We ask that someone intervene to hold contractors accountable and shepherd this project to completion. Number three, janitorial and engineering maintenance. Our civic group fears that a school of this size allotted with only two engineers will be stretched too thinly to address the added responsibility for the security and care of the new athletic field. While Shores physically sits in our neighborhood, it serves as the neighborhood school for many students across the northwest side. And while Shores is a special building given its landmark status-
Ms. Ankeny.
CPS has the obligation to ensure healthy and safe conditions for all of the schools in the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, that concludes the registered speakers for Shores, and their request is to have a student address the board since one of their speakers was not able to state-
We're going to say that to the end of the-
Until we're done with public participation?
Arnie, do you have anything to add that you didn't say to Alderman?
As I stated earlier, we're working with the network chief and the principal to address a number of these issues, both on the capital side and on the maintenance side, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. And the next group-
May I ask you, I have to return these students, they're my students, to the school. It's already 1:20. If this gentleman is going to have the opportunity to speak, I would really appreciate it if he could do it now.
Members of the board, President Clark, Dr. Jackson, good morning. My name is Nick Lopez, and I'm a senior at Shores High School. I wish I didn't have to be here, but there has been a problem occurring in my school and many like mine, and the time for waiting has long passed. There exists a world in my high school, a block long and a world wide that's filled with diverse learners and future global leaders. Yet, the opportunity to reach maximum potential has been denied from them, not because of their own failures, but because of flaws in the system that's for, to serve them. Bathrooms that don't reflect the modern standards, walls that are chipping away, a first floor that is sinking and a roof about a collapse, these are all signs of a historical landmark that's been left to the back of a textbook. What these problem, what these problems represent is a much larger problem in our public school system. Because the worst thing about this issue is not the fact that these conditions happened, but that this was allowed to happen and was ignored. And now we are tired. I'm tired of waiting, but I'm especially tired of this constant blame game that has plagued our school politics. I'm tired of yelling at you and you yelling at us, which has gotten us nowhere. I know you all have good intentions, so now I plead that you look within your moral compass and come see for yourself our school, this harsh reality we students and teachers face, and begin to put an end to it. Because certain schools shouldn't get new gymnasiums while I still have to ask for basic foundation improvements. Because in a country that passed bound versus board of education, we shouldn't accept this separate but equal lifestyles in our school. This problem will not get fixed in a day or a week, but it cannot continue to be ignored. This issue requires all of our well power and a new American grit, a renowned sense of ownership, responsibility, and bravery. The clear request for education funding, some might see as outrageous, not solely because it is all of our jobs, but because it is morally right to do so. Because in a city that promotes globalization, in a country that offers liberty and equal opportunities to succeed, we can no longer continue to accept the separate but equal lifestyle that has plagued our ideals and the people that we, we represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 20, Renell Perry, followed by 58, Benny Henry, and then we have Speaker number 25, Walter Walker. Mr. Perry, last call.
Hi, I'm Renell Perry. We were here at the January board meeting from the support group, and we extended an invitation to this board as well as Dr. Jackson to attend an event called Lunch with a Leader, which hosted over 375 public school students from 7th through 12th grade. And we want to personally thank Dr. Jackson for taking time to come and attend that meeting. We also have pictures from the meeting that shows her engaging with the students. So I think it's really important that we recognize this type of leadership. There are a lot of people who don't vote with their time and Dr. Jackson does. It was delightful to see her come and engage with the students. They were so grateful for the wisdom that she shared as she sat at a table and listened to them and then gave them words of encouragement. We think Dr. Jackson has done an outstanding job leading the Chicago Public Schools, and she is really hands-on, being a product of CPS. So we just want to continue to say thank you. We want to thank this board for having the foresight to have someone like her at the helm. We also want to thank Carl Kemp, who was in attendance, as well as Kareem Pender. We want to thank Skip Johnson for all those individuals that are supporting the good work that the support group is doing within Chicago Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And the next speaker, Benny Henry?
Thank you. I'm a read this, my name is Benny Henry. Good morning to the board, President Frank Clark, members of the board, CEO Dr. Janice Jackson, and Chief Executive Officer Latanya McDade. My name is Benny Henry. I am the founder and executive director of an organization called the Support Group that provides academic services in inner-city youth in various target community areas. We have provided after-school summer programs and employment to summer Chicago Public School students for a number of years. This year, the Support Group will celebrate 30 years of being a nonprofit organization. And today, I want to take time to publicly thank Dr. Jackson for her leadership, transparency, and communication with parent community and organizations like the Support Group. And I think I don't have to echo what Renell just said. She just took a part of my speech, so I let that echo for us, just hosting Lunch with a Leader. I wanted to personally drop this off to you. They wanted me to give it to them outside. I want to make sure you got it in that picture. Legendary Tim Hardaway, Mark Brooks from Arrow, Arrowmark, they're in the picture as well, but I want to make sure that the board understands we appreciate her leadership and the students, and I want to make sure your leadership is what the students need in the city of Chicago. Does I ask that you keep doing what you do in the manner that you do, and we all wish you best. And we'll be hiring over 500 kids. I will be paying to have work in the summertime out of a grant that I get. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate this opportunity to get a chance to speak to you all about how we feel about her coming to our attendance and our Lunch with a Leader. I thank you so much. You wind up coming, want to stay for me, and she wind up actually being our guest speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please, Walter Walker, please. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker, we will then have Speaker number 26, please, Sequiya Williams, followed by 27, Jacqueline Brooks, 42, Alfreda Johnson Brown, and Speaker 60, Vanessa Valentin.
Good morning, board, Dr. Jackson, Chief McDade. I'm sure Ms. Ellis wanted me to wait last. Good morning. It saddens me that our predominantly African-American and Hispanic children are getting the adequate education and treatment that they deserve. A portion of the five-year vision listed a whole child. It states that CPS wants to support the children so that they are healthy, safety, engaged, and academically challenged. How do you support a child academically if they're in clustered classrooms with unqualified teachers and no teacher aides? We have no full-time nurses, rarely any security guards. We have our gymnasium. There are so many things that are unsafe for our children to even have to go to school at this point. Half of the children don't want to go. How do you support children's safety when we've had children gone missing, including mine? We've swept that under the rug. We have leaks. We've had mold. We don't have books. So when we talk about equity, this is not worth the paper that it's on. Doolittle does not have books. When we talk about King, and I actually wrote a speech, I want to talk to you as a parent right now. When we talk about equity and we talk about $32 million, that was a slap in the face. Our schools on the South Side, none of them were listed. King, Simeon, Doolittle, Woodson, none of those schools were listed on this $32 million- King, Simeon, Doolittle, Woodson, none of those schools were listed on this $32 million plan, and you say that you did an evaluation to see the schools that were in need. How? We have three 14-year-old kids sitting in the eighth grade right now. The only reason that they're going to high school is because they legally cannot be Phillips just had a bomb threat two weeks ago. Nobody's heard about it. What are we doing about that? My child went missing from Doolittle. I stood before you all two board meetings ago and requested that Delmon Dawes be terminated. He called Child Protective Services on me after my son went missing. Dr. Jackson, my son was found off of 35th and King Drive. A woman picked my son up and put him in the car. And Child Protective Services was called on me as if I did something wrong. There's no way that this man is still walking into a school with children at this point. I'm asking you to sit at a roundtable with the parents. You say that you, per your conversation yesterday, that you guys have had the roundtable meetings? Exactly. Name one Doolittle parent, a Woodson parent, a King parent, a Simeon parent, a Southside parent, any of them that set up those tables with you.
Chief McDay, can you respond to that?
So, one, I want to address Ms. Williams personally in terms of some of the concerns that you've had. We've had 20 staff members total have met with you over the course of the last year.
Absolutely.
14 meetings to date have been held.
Absolutely.
I personally met with you and sent a formal letter addressing many of your concerns.
With many infractions on it.
I'm speaking.
Go ahead.
You spoke, and we let you speak. I also sent you an email about the last three, probably not the last, but the three concerns you sent yesterday. So we've engaged you. We've had conversations with you. Jaden is here. She's met with you. Katie's met with you. As I said, 20 members of our staff, two board members, seven central office, six network, and four school-based staff. We've engaged you.
So the parent conference that we had outside today, are you saying that none of those exist? The press conference that we had outside, none of those parents are having issues because it was a lot of parents out today, Chief McDay?
Ms. Williams, I'm speaking to you about the concerns that you brought before us regarding-
Let me stop this. We've heard you, and you've heard the response, and I hope that these issues are resolved in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next speaker, please, Jacqueline Brooks.
Let me say good afternoon, and I had no idea what my principal signed me up for today. I would have eaten breakfast or drank more coffee. God bless you guys. I am a parent at Belmont-Cragan Elementary School, and I'm just here to say thank you on behalf of Belmont-Cragan's new building.
Is this your first board meeting?
Yes, it is. And I won't say if it'll be my last. Hopefully, it won't. But I don't know. Let me say this. I just want to say thank you to you guys. I want to tell a little bit about Belmont-Cragan's story really quick and say that we are personalized learning school. We're the only dual-language school in the area. We have been for the last five years. And when I use the word personalized learning, it is specific to a whole group lesson, and it goes out into individual lessons in the classroom, so it's not just individual lessons where the children are just doing their own lessons. My son is a fifth grader, and he basically, he's basically a self-directed learner. After that whole group is taught, he moves out into a self-directed learning environment, such as I do, even at a university as myself. I don't even know, just please excuse me, because I'm kind of baffled because of this long day. But nevertheless, I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. I'm looking forward to the implementation of the new building coming up soon. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, for visiting our school over a year ago, two years ago, on our journey to even embark on getting a new school. We have 10 classrooms of preschool, and we have another 10 classrooms or more, 15 classrooms of K to 8. And I just want to thank you so much for what you're doing. We're looking forward to doing more with this personalized learning, with the dual language. The dual, I've seen, I'm also an in-class tutor for math, and I see the academic success. I mean, it's tremendous. And thank you. God bless you.
Ms. Valentin?
Good afternoon, President Clark, Janice. I usually don't write things down, but I did today. My name is Vanessa Valentin, and I'm a proud Steyman's College Prep parent. I'm here today with Steyman's LSC members, I'm with parents from Northwest Middle, Mary Lyon, Camrose, Belmont-Cragan, and Schubert, because we're building relationships as a neighborhood school. Wow, I can't believe my journey started four years ago, when my oldest son, diverse learner, was looking for a school. Lots of challenges, hearing lots of bad rumors about our neighborhood school. But we said, you know what? That's where we're going to go. And I'm proud to stand here today and say, my son will graduate from Steyman's College Prep this June. So I want to thank the teachers. I also want to thank the district. The district for the commitment, the investment, and for putting community voice first. Because when I got to Steyman's four years ago, we were forgotten. And I could relate to some of the parents and people that spoke here today. But what I learned through this journey is that we all play a role in this. Not just the board sitting in front of us, not just the CEO, but the biggest work that we need to do is the parents. Because if we work together in unity with the city, with CPS, we could accomplish anything that we want for our communities. And that's why I stand here proud, saying thank you. Let's continue to work to unite it. And I have a list of people that I have to say thank you to, because it hasn't been easy conversations. They've been accountability conversations. They've been conversations that I thought you would never look at me again. But guess what? You put Belmont-Cragan, and you put the Steyman's College Prep first. So I want to thank first you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you.
Ms. Valentin?
Pedro Soto, Arne Rivera, Jim Dispensa, Lardo Roman, Doug Henning, Pam Price, Juan Maldonado, and Alexandra Lopez, Willie Oka, and Jaden Chow. Let's continue to work together, and our work is not done yet. It's just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentin. And the next speaker for the group, Alfreda Johnson Brown, from Caffey.
Hello. Good afternoon. As this lady spoke earlier, I absolutely didn't know I would be here this long. However, I learned a lot today, and I heard a lot from a lot of the schools. But I want to thank the board, Dr. Jackson, Latanya McDay, and everyone who had a head in, allowing and permitting Caffey, once they submit the application, to become a STEM school. I am very proud to be all of Ingrisham parent representative, pack and LSC parent, who is there to work with our students, the teachers, the community. We are elated, happy to be sharing in that $32 million to assist with getting our children what they need to move on to the STEM and be able to move into the 21st century. They can fit to end to high schools that will also lead them into STEM if they go that route. And if they choose not, they have the foundations and the basis to move forward with that. Again, I want to say from Caffey, Paul Caffey, now STEM school, thank you, and we appreciate you, and this was a very good experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 33, please, Raoul Arroyo, followed by 46, Maria Moreno. We will then have Speaker number 37, Rachel Torrejon, and Speaker 53, Paulina Torrejon. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raoul Arroyo. I'm here to represent the pack from Hancock Prep. The reason we are here today is because we want to thank CPS for the granted new school building. We also want to remind CPS that we want a facility to its highest potential. We will not be pleased with a facility to offer half of the high school experience to our teenagers. Lately, we've been attending many meetings, and we have been informed that we were missing classrooms. We have a smaller auditorium. Many parts of the high school that is, that we are lacking already, or space, and as a parent is very disappointed. I don't want you guys to take a run. We really appreciate it, the new school, but if we want to do something, we want to make sure it's doing well. Our children are the future, and they deserve quality in quality education and in quality classrooms. In a high-quality high school that has same potential those in the north side of Chicago, Hancock College Prep is a selective enrollment school that offers CTE programs in the southwest of Chicago. That truly deserves the best of the benefits for the students. Currently, the school, like I said, has been missing many important elements. We are missing sport facilities. Classrooms are suffering of lack of space. As a human body must be given legs, arms, in order to function at the best potential and be full of life. What's the point to have a high school, a brand-new high school, whole facility with those things?
Mr. Arroyo?
I just want to say thank you again, but take this in mind, and if we were going to do building something new, let's build the right for our children, that they are future of our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. And the next speaker for Hancock, Maria Moreno, please.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Maria Moreno. I'm a parent of three at Hancock College Prep. I'm also the president of the pack and an LSC member. First of all, yes, thank you for the new approval of the new building at Hancock College Prep High School. Second, that with the construction of a new building for Hancock College Prep Selective Enrollment High School, we deserve the same high-quality campus that other selective enrollment high schools in the city have, such as Jones College Prep, Whitney Young, and Walter Payton, to name a few. In order for us to inspire and motivate our present and future students of Hancock College Prep, they need to be presented with the equal facilities as these other elite high schools that I have previously mentioned have, because we are not even getting a large enough campus at the location that we are being given. Not to mention a sports facility and enough classroom space. By building a similar facility as the elite high schools have, we are not only promoting higher academic progress in the southwest side, but encouraging the entire city to look in our direction as an academic progress in our city.
Thank you very much.
And the next speaker, please, Rachel Torrejon.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rachel Torrejon. Soy una madre de un estudiante de quinto grado de la escuela elemental Grissom. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre la sobrepoblación y la falta de recursos que existen en nuestra escuela. Existen tres salones con 40 estudiantes en cada salón. Además, hay otros cuatro salones con 30 o más estudiantes. En la clase de mi hija, hay 43 estudiantes. Los maestros no tienen tiempo suficiente para enseñar a tanto niño. La sobrepoblación en las aulas afecta el rendimiento académico de los estudiantes y el desempeño laboral de los maestros. Esto afecta directamente el futuro de nuestros niños, ya que no progresan académicamente y reciben bajas calificaciones. Debido a esto, estudiantes como mi hija llegan a casa frustrados y con un sin número de preguntas sin respuesta. Nuestros estudiantes se encuentran con una mayor desventaja cuando comienzan a aplicar para las escuelas secundarias. Nuestros niños ya no caben en nuestra escuela. Todos los estudiantes de CPS necesitan y merecen una educación justa y con igualdad, sin importar en qué parte de Chicago viven. Somos un programa de bellas artes y artes escénicas magnet, pero CPS quiere que nuestros maestros de arte y música, con un carrito, recorriendo salón por salón, dar su clase. Esto es inaceptable. Esto ya ha durado demasiado tiempo en Grissom. Necesitamos una solución ahora. Nuestra escuela cuenta con suficiente terreno como para construir una visión. Eso es lo que nuestros estudiantes merecen. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Rachel Torrejon, and I am the mother of a fifth-grade student at Virgil Grissom Elementary. I'm here to talk about the problems of overcrowding and the lack of resources that exist in our school. There are three grades with over 40 students in a class, and four more grades with 30 students or more. In my daughter's classroom, there are 42 students. Teachers don't have enough time to teach each student when there are so many students. Excuse me. This directly overcrowded classrooms hurt students' academic performance and hurt teachers' work performances. This directly affects the future of our children because they do not progress academically and receive lower grades. Because of this, students like my daughter come home frustrated with a series of unanswered questions. Students are at a greater disadvantage as they begin to apply to high schools. Our children no longer fit in our school. All CPS students need and deserve a fair and equal education, despite what part of Chicago they live in. We are a fine performing arts and magnet program, but CPS wants us to have teachers teach art and music by going around with a cart. This is unacceptable. This has gone on for far too long at Grissom. We need a solution now. In our school, we have enough land to construct an addition. Our children deserve it. And this is her daughter, who also is a registered speaker?
Yes. Paulina Torrejon, please.
Hi, mi nombre- Hi, my name is Paulina Torrejon, and I am a student at Virgil I Grissom Elementary School. I am here to talk about how overcrowded my school is, because I've experienced this daily. In my classroom, there are 43 students, including me, packed in one small classroom. There is not enough space for all of us. First, I have to remind my classmates to push in their seats as I am passing by to throw away used pieces of paper at the garbage bins near the front of the classroom. I can barely fit through the narrow openings created by my classmates' desks and chairs. Because of this, the classrooms are too packed. Secondly, while in class, it is difficult for my teacher to always answer my questions about the new class material. Many times, I have unanswered questions when I get home with my homework. My parents struggle to reteach many concepts to me at home. Thirdly, in case of emergencies such as fires, I worry that I will be unable to safely evacuate the building because of how overcrowded my school is. I should not have to worry about my safety. I should be worried about, I should be focused on my education. I am fighting for this issue because I want to make sure that all the students, including myself, can receive a quality education at Grissom without having to worry about overcrowdedness. Our education matters.
Thank you. Is this the last speaker?
For Grissom, yes.
Great. I think Arnie was supposed to, or Gail, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say thank you for coming to speak, and that I have received some information about your overcrowding, and I'll be coming out next week. So I look forward to that.
They haven't told us what time you're coming? You don't know?
Well, we'll work that out.
We do want to share some additional information, too, just about some things that we have in place for Grissom.
So, I'm Liz Kirby. I oversee the Office of Network Support. We've been in meetings with the principal and have some solutions that he will be sharing with the body, the LSC, Thursday, and also the staff this week. So we did a space utilization analysis. We looked at the budget, looked at the schedule, to really figure out what was happening with the overcrowding. So we do see some causes for that. In order to address that, we did give the school some additional funding for positions for teachers to alleviate the crowding. In addition, we'll assist the school in building out some additional classrooms in order to alleviate the space. So the issue isn't just teachers, it's also space in the building as well. And then finally, we've worked with the principal to do an analysis of the schedules for students to make sure that the students that are English learners and students that are diverse learners are having the minutes and the needs met effectively. So our chief of both of those departments met with the principal, and we will circle back to make sure that those changes have been made for Grissom Elementary School.
Thank you.
They don't think that's acceptable, because they're, what they've heard is that they want the art teacher to give up the art room to put one of those other new positions in. And they're arguing that this is a fine arts school. The art room serves as more than just an art room. There's simply not enough room. And if you, you'll see when you go out there, if you look at the land that the school sits on, there is a ton of space to build onto the school, and that's what they are asking for.
So for this spring, though, in order to, for now, we have to convert that room so that we can alleviate the crowding. The other issue that you're raising is a longer-term solution, but for this spring, we do have to reduce those class size numbers, and so we will have-
and inspirational leadership to Chicago Public Schools. Dr. Jackson, we know you were a student, and you have ascended all the way to the chief executive office, and you do this because you lead this system with knowledge, honor, integrity, and the ability to inspire others to achieve greatness. Thank you. You are a great listener. Thanks for coming to our community and listening to the desires of our families. We want to also thank you for showing such genuine concern and love for the children and families of this great city. The North Lundale Community has completed a Quality of Life Plan. And this Quality of Life Plan, there are 13 components, one of which is education. In our educational plan, the families in North Lundale indicated a desire to have a child-parent engagement center. Thanks to you, Dr. Jackson, Chief Pam LaPrice and Juan Maldonado are now in the process of developing that plan for us. In addition, we have indicated a desire for a STEAM partnership academy.
Ms. Green, your two minutes are up.
I'll finish it for her. All parents and schools and community at large will have an open line of communication and collaboration for this STEAM school. Thanks to our leadership, Pam Price and Juan are in the process of developing it, and the Lundale, and the North Lundale community wants a STEAM partnership community. We have already recruited 10 partnerships that include BMO Harris, Caterpillar, Cabot Microelectronics, Chicago Mercantile Exchange, Exelon, Center Space, McGowan, Peoples Gas, the Staines Family Foundation. They have all made pledges to us, and we have also raised over $200,000 to get this project going. I am a component, I am a product of Chicago Public, Chicago Public Schools and the North Lundale Community. And at this time, I would just like to say to the board, a new STEAM school in Lundale will rejuvenate the neighborhood, replenish the neighborhood, and save the North Lundale Community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And our next speaker, Maria Owens, Speaker 49.
Good afternoon. I'm Maria Owens. I am a community rep on the LSC of Hirsch Metropolitan High School, a community volunteer as well as a advocate for increased funding to provide resources for Hirsch Metro High School and the Grand Crossing community. Our community is deeply saddened to confirm what we have suspected for some time, that the district has a callous disregard for the children of the greater Grand Crossing area. I wish our only concern was a prettier football field. When it came to distributing your capital budget funds of $989 million, not one dime was earmarked for critically needed resources and improvements at Hirsch. We applied for the Performing Arts and Fine and Performing Arts Program to be added to our curriculum for the upcoming school year. Our request was struck down. We are repeatedly derided by this board citing low enrollment numbers. Ironically, the board's inaction and neglect has perpetuated those low enrollment numbers. And I know my words are harsh, but unfortunately, I believe they're justified. I know that you know what it takes for Hirsch to improve. Last month, I stated that you have the power to either affect real and positive change or devastating destruction with a stroke of a pen. Unfortunately, you chose devastating destruction. Our children cry out to you, and they implore you to recognize that they have value. The funding that you do based on student enrollment is immoral. The basic Hirsch needs must be met by looking at the needs of the community and not by a maniacal look at numbers. You know why students and our scholars go outside the community, and you can change it right away, today, by giving us academic and extracurricular and social-emotional resources that we need at Hirsch. It is immoral for the district to continue to neglect and abandon our students. And they may not be affluent, but they deserve your respect. All I ask is that you give them what they need, because you have the power to do it, you have the resources to do it, you've just chosen not to, and you can change that today. And I ask that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our last speaker, please. Speaker number 52, Alcides Espinal.
Thank you for letting me speak. This is about abuse of an individual education plan, an IEP. My son attended the Chicago Public Schools. He knew me as his father, and we had a close bond for the first six years of his life. In November of 2003, Dr. Jeremy Faiwell, principal of Carrdenas Elementary in CPS, wrote about my, wrote about my son and used his name in a national newsletter. Dr. Faiwell called him his stepchild. He was. Dr. Faiwell wrote about my son's special needs and discussed how he was involved in the development of my son's IEP. Dr. Faiwell never asked for my permission to make my son his special needs specimen. In 2006, after I had filed for visitation, Dr. Faiwell's biological uncle, the man who led the fight against civil rights in Chicago, his cousin, his then-wife, also a teacher in CPS, claimed in sworn statements filed in court, which you have, that my son and I could not see each other because of his IEP, that my son had been declared a danger to himself and others. He was, of course, still attending school in CPS. Yes, an 11-year-old student of the Chicago Public Schools had been declared a danger to himself and others. In November 2018, the CPS Law Department stated that there was no evidence to establish that students were endangered or possibly harmed. You have that also. So, this means it was a lie. A fraud on the court occurred. Criminal official misconduct. Illinois State Board of Education Ethics violations. CPS policy manual violations. This means an IEP was used to basically kidnap my son.
What legal action are you asking this board to take?
I am asking this board to hold the employees there accountable for this. I'm asking them to be forced to correct the court record. Sir, this is a felony. This is a crime.
I just wanted, I wanted to know. Joe?
Yes, I, this is a matter that is pending in our investigations unit. I admit I don't have a lot of information about it at this point. Let me take a closer look at it, and I'll be in touch with the speaker.
I hope so. I look forward to that, because I've been waiting since November.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Joe. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes public participation.
Board members, are there any questions or comments regarding any of the presentations during public participation?
I just want to say, in the, in the four years that I've been here on the board, I don't think I've ever heard from so many principals and school leaders previously. And it was a personal joy to hear their acknowledgement, Dr. Jackson, of the vision and the repetition of some of the things that were in there, like the emphasis on safety that, you know, was promoted, and the ideas of equity and ARA. That's what I'm leaving with today.
The other thing I'd mention is that I don't know that there was this much community engagement in previous iterations of CPS's vision document, and I know that that's been purposeful. It's a result of a lot of hard work to engage parents and students and folks across the district, community members. So, I just want to commend you and your team for doing that, because I think that's what's going to strengthen this vision and make it something that is not just something that we all uphold here, but something that the whole city does as well. So, I just want to commend you for that.
And, Mr. President, I'm sorry if I may interrupt. Before you proceed with the motion to go into closed session, Aisha, our honorary student board member, would like to address the board.
Go ahead.
So, once again, thank you for this opportunity. I am always happy and thankful to CPS for their contributions and their interest in students. I would like to thank you, Dr. Janis, for providing schools with a great program to help students achieve excellent education. My school is one of them, and then I'm really proud of that. I would also like to thank you, the whole board, for taking their time and listening to the concerns of the parents that's impacting the, their schools, the students' education. And then, whenever an issue is presented at the board, you're already aware of it, you already have the data to support the issue. So, it's really nice to see that the issues that are presented at this board are taken seriously, they are not ignored. And I would also like to give a shout-out to Chief Latania McDate for coming out to Young Women Leadership Cafe. It was really nice to have her, and she was, she was really nice, so, and then it went well. And then, thank you so much, once again.
Thank you. I think those comments are greatly appreciated. And with that, Board Member Ward, do you have a motion?
I do. I move for the passage of motion number 19-0327-M01, and the commencement of a closed session to consider matters permitted under Section 21 of the Open Meetings Act, subsections 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 21, as specified in the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Goolsbee?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five i's, zero n's.
We will now go into closed session. Thank you.
The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Oh, talking to myself? Okay. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with closed session items from the General Counsel, and I will begin with continued counsel retentions. These items do require a vote. The first report is authorized continued retention of the law firm Riley Safer Homes and Cansilla, LP. The second report is authorized continued retention of the law office of Linda K. Hogan. The third report is authorized continued retention of the law firm Sanchez, Daniels, and Hoffman, LP. And the fourth report is authorized continued retention of the law firm Zuber Lawler and Del Duca, LP. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
A second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Goolsbee?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five i's, zero n's. I will continue with settlements, and these items do require a vote. First report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for James F. Radditt's, case number 14WC038265. Second report is a workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Marilyn Page, case number 11WC004762. The third report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Dave Hawthorne, case number 12WC1873. And the fourth report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Anthony Angelili, case number 15WC39135. The fifth report is approved payment of proposed settlement regarding ZJ. And the sixth report, approved payment of proposed settlement regarding Estrada versus Board of Education, case number 18-CV-04016. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with law personnel matters, and these items do require a vote. The first report is appoint senior assistant general counsel, Department of Law, for Michelle Oruzugru. The second report is appoint assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Catherine Coles Johnson. The third report is appoint senior assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Julie J. Lagreer. And the fourth report, appoint deputy general counsel, Department of Law, for Lisa Butler. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of February 27, 2019 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on February 27, 2019 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Goolsbee?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five i's, zero n's. And I believe Member Garza has a motion, please.
I move that the record, the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of February 27, 2019, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the opens meeting.
Is there a second? I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Goolsbee?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five i's, zero n's. Mr. President, I'll continue with one real estate exec item, and this item does require a vote. Approve entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Housing Authority for the exchange of land, a temporary construction license agreement for facilities, and license for replacement of parking for Aldridge School. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since it It is to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education of the City of Chicago and Unite Here Local Number One. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. And I'll continue with additional CEO executive session items. We have a talent recommendation to approve appointment of Title IX Officer effective March 25, 2019 and ratify all lawful actions taken as the Title IX Officer since March 25, 2019 for Kami Pratt. Continue with the principal contract renewal ALSC. And then we have a warning resolution for Lori Bortnick, teacher assigned to Ludwig van Beethoven Elementary School. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with items from the board and these items do require a vote. We have the first report resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And the second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary appointed teachers. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that on March 22, 2019, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary appointed teachers pursuant to Boardo four dash one and one oh five ILCS five slash thirty-four dash eighty-four. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board member, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of February 27, 2019 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on February 27, 2019 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second? I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Goolsbee?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five i's, zero nays. And I believe Member Garza has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of February 27, 2019, prepared by the board secretary, be approved and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Opens Meeting.
Is there a second? I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Goolsbee?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five i's, zero nays. Mr. President, I'll continue with one real estate exec item and this item does require a vote. Approve entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Housing Authority for the exchange of land, a temporary construction license agreement for facilities, and license for replacement of parking for Aldridge School. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. I will begin with resolution... One resolution, one policy, and the board rule. These items do require a vote. So we have RS1, PO1, and RU1. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with the communication CO1. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, April 24, 2019, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m. Public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the April 24, 2019 board meeting, advance registration to speak. An observer will be available beginning Monday, April 22 at 10:30 a.m. and will close on Tuesday, April 23 at 5 p.m. or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And to ensure the equity of access to address the board, an individual may not speak at two consecutive board meetings. In the event the individual registers to speak at a consecutive meeting, the individual will not be called to address the board. Although advanced registration is recommended, you can also register to observe a meeting on the day of the board meeting via same-day in-person observer registration at 42 West Madison Street lobby. The registration time opens at 10 a.m. and will remain open during the duration of the board meeting. Same-day in-person observer registrations are taken on a first-come, first-served basis as seats become available. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the sixty registered speakers. Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote. And we have EX1 and 2. We then move on to ED1, MS1, PR1, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We have PR11, 12, 13, and 14. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will then move on to additional items on the agenda that do not require a vote. And we have EX3 and EX4 and AR1. Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark "received and filed."
Thank you, Mr. President. And there are no further items on the public agenda.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor. Aye. We adjourn. Thank you, everyone.